Okay, I make a motion to call the meeting to order. Is there a second?
Okay.
We'll call.
Trustee Stetson.
Hi.
Trustee Lichen.
Hi.
Trustee Lanter.
Hi.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Motion passes.
How about me?
Oh, Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes. Let's see what stuff I'm starting off on.
Okay, does anybody have any conflict of interest or anything to disclose regarding the agenda items before us this evening?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
Trustee Keating?
I do not.
I do not. Okay, with that being said, would the village clerk please read the conflict of interest disclosure and the open meeting compliance certification?
Okay. All right, the public will have opportunities to comment on specific agenda items when they're in the meeting and also on general matters at the end of the meeting. Speakers can comment once in each comment window if it is on a specific agenda item, is not a debate, deposition, or panel discussion. Speakers must step to the front of the room if physically able. Alternately, they may provide comments from where they are seated. If an attendee is participating via web conference technology such as Zoom, the clerk will announce how attendees should signal that they wish to come. This may differ by platform, but is typically accomplished through raise the hand feature. And we are using Zoom, and that is how we recognize you. If you raise your hand, I will call you. If you put your question in Q and A, I assume you want me to read that question to the board. If you put your comments in chat, I do not check chat. Okay, speakers must give their name, address, and organization. There shall be an exemption for any category of people protected by New York state law. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer. Speaker must limit their remarks to three minutes on a given topic. Speakers may not yield any remaining time they may have to another speaker. Board members may, with the permission of the mayor, only interact with speaker during their remarks for the purpose of clarification or information. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or the representatives may address the board by written communications to villageclerk@villageofpittsburgh.com. All written communications will become part of the public record and will be attached to the minutes for that meeting. At the center's request, written communications will be read aloud by the clerk at the meeting and will adhere to the three-minute timing. If printed materials or other media are provided by attendees during the meeting, they must be submitted to the village board with optional distribution to audience members. All materials will be part of the public record. Private distribution of materials to audience members only is prohibited. Might be a good time to remind everybody to leave your phones.
Please, thank you for reading that. Before we proceed tonight, I would like to make a brief statement. Last month, this board unanimously voted to hire Lacy Sawyer for the position of village gardener. She was very excited about joining the team and had met with our DPW crew as well as Dorothea and me. We were impressed by her enthusiasm, her background in horticulture, and her additional skills, which could transition her to office work during the winter months. Unfortunately, she was suddenly taken ill, hospitalized, and she never recovered. She passed away two weeks ago. Yeah. Our hearts go out to her friends and family, and I ask everyone attending for a moment of silence in remembrance. She really was lovely. I also would just like to add a few words in connection with this young person. I am aware of incorrect information that's been floating around our community. The young woman that we just remembered was hired part-time at $16 an hour, not for what was rumored and spread around this community, for more than $63,000 a year. I think it's important for our village residents to have accurate information, which is why I'm mentioning it now. And with that being said, let's get on to our agenda. Let's start with the building inspector report. Are there any questions for Steve? Steve, are you there? Steve? Hello?
I'm here.
Oh, there you are. Yes, you are. Loud and clear. Thank you. Okay. Trustee Lanter has a question. Yes? Okay. Steve, at 16 Lincoln Avenue, you mentioned you inspected for an activity which is now permitted, which leads me to believe that it was not permitted when you inspected it. Could you elaborate, please, what's about 16 Lincoln Avenue?
Yeah, well, originally, I saw the dumpster there. I got the owner of the property to get a dumpster permit, and he said he was just doing some general remodeling.
Okay.
I went by several times. I started seeing some framing and some other things in the dumpster, some insulation. So I walked up to the door one day when a contractor was there. I talked to the contractor, and I was able to look in the door. I saw that there was more activity than was expressed to me. So I made arrangement to meet the homeowner there and got him to get permits for the activity that's going on in the property.
Okay, so it's a matter of permitting a construction that might have involved more than a certain number of square feet for which a permit is required. Were architectural drawings required for the work that was being done?
No, no, it's not a that. It's just some framing and then some insulation, some new plumbing, things that need to be inspected prior to being closed up.
Thank you. That's the only question.
That was the only one. Any other questions for Steve regarding?
Yeah, I got one for Steve. Steve, I saw in your report, received a $5,000 grant for clean energy community benchmark. Tell us a little more about that. That sounds very exciting.
Yeah, we obviously are joined a clean energy community, and you reach certain milestones to get grant money from the state. We reached one level. We're actually partway to the next level. If we achieve the next level, depending on some certain things we got to do, we will be eligible for $20,000. They are supposed to be utilized for clean energy upgrades and things like that for the community. So, I mean, we're moving along. We're doing a, we did a study on the streetlights to see what, you know, how many of those were done. That will add points to us. So everything we do towards going green gives the village some credit.
Yeah, it's a great program. It's geared to a positive outcome. And one other thing that I'd like to mention about receiving the $5,000 grant through this Climate Smart Community Program is that it is, there's no matching funds. So this is an outright grant of funds that we can use for sustainable projects within our village. So that's a great thing, yeah. And also, Steve, I want to thank you because you've really been kind of riding herd on this and making sure all of our points are submitted as we move along with this. So thank you for that.
It's a pleasure. Rob Robertson is very easy to work with and more than willing to help us in gaining the next level, too.
Yep, geared to a positive outcome. Any other questions?
Yeah, so just following along on that same idea, given that we received grant money earmarked for this, Dorothy, I see Brooklyn's not here. I would normally ask him this question. I assume that's going to be put in its own account and tracked separately within the general ledger so that we can make sure that we're spending it responsibly.
It'll, yes, it will come in. We'll earmark it specifically for the grant purposes.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Steve. Okay, next up, we have the DPW. Zach's here. Hello.
Sorry, I did not include this with my report. There's another segment on my end.
Trustee Keating, he's just handing out a proposal that he received from Spal Management, and you can speak to that during your, do you want to start now or do you want to?
Last month, I was approached by Spal Management. There's a small section of road, Road Street, that was unpaved when we gave growth back in 2016, I believe it was. And Spal is proposing, because it's kind of a combination of ownership, there's no better clear ownership of it, but we do have property that runs through it. So Spal is proposing that we do it together. We got a proposal for milling out two inches of asphalt and replacing two inches. For $9,500, it's approximately 3500 square feet of asphalt, and they asked that we split the cost with them getting this done. This is through a contractor that they reached out to and.
And so, just for people listening and in the audience, this is the Village Grove Office Complex, the road leading up to it, and also to our Village Lane.
Not Village Grove. Village Grove is on.
I'm sorry, that's Village Green is.
I'm sorry, Village Green, yes.
Yeah, we're Village Grove.
Village Grove, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's Village something. Right, Village something. So anyway, so it's a section of the road that we have partial ownership of, and they do as well.
You can see on the map, it's a highlighted area in yellow. Dan, I know you can't see this, but it's literally a 3500-foot square foot section of asphalt that has a small section of our road that we've shot in it.
And so, and you spoke with our treasurer, you spoke with Dorothy about funding for that?
Yes, treasurer, and the money can be found by.
So we're looking at the $4,000?
$4,750.
Yep, $4,750. And what action would you like the board to take tonight?
Just to decide whether or not we should move forward. I know it's kind of short notice, and you guys have not had a lot of time to look at it, but it's just an opportunity to get something done with some help from the property owner.
Is it under the threshold for bids?
Well, not necessarily. So it would require multiple bids if we were doing it ourselves. And this is, I'm not sure if we can, you know, bypass that because we're working with.
Yep.
And that's the one thing I was going to ask, and I see Jeff is walking in.
Perfect timing for.
Because we're working with a homeowner, with a property owner, I want to see where the liability would fall for us.
Right, that's another.
Otherwise, I can maneuver the funds.
So I want to make sure. Proceed as a gift.
Correct. I want to make sure whatever we're done, how we pay for it, do it makes sense.
Jeff, you can just use this one.
Okay.
What's that?
I just handed this to him.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I'll be right back.
Yeah, he'll be right back.
My management is processing.
I know, we probably are. Okay, we'll just give, we'll give, yes. Okay. We have a sidebar conversation for people listening.
I'm sorry.
No, I know, I understand, but we also have a question from a trustee.
You can, if you want to speak, so that everyone can hear you.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, Scott, I was just seeing if there might be a maintenance easement as well with this. Yeah, Mike, given the research that we did on the survey, these ones popped up in that location that you're speaking of, and sometimes those easements speak to maintenance agreements that are legalized and that sort of thing. We didn't search for, in our records, we didn't search for maintenance agreements, but I would just, as a safe play, try and maybe check it out and see if there's some sort of participation formula or something in there to identify who does what and when, so that you can be solid.
So we may need to revisit that.
When you brought this up, I did, this is a very familiar area, so I just thought I would take advantage of the opportunity and tell Jeff, tell Zach about that.
No, that's great. We were just starting this discussion when you walked in, Jeff. And this is a section of road that is partially owned by us and partially owned by Spal Management at Village Grove. Coming down, it's a piece coming down towards the Office Park and Village Lane, and they would like to have us enjoin them in splitting the cost of paving that road, and the cost is $9,500, so we would be splitting that. But our village engineer just made note that there might be some type of easement or maintenance agreement, and maybe we need to, before we can approve it, kind of, yeah, do a little bit more digging, you know, just to make sure we.
Scott, do we know if there's an easement?
I studied that map for hours, so I can tell you that there is an easement over there, but I would need to pull the easement from the clerk's office.
That would tell, that'd be where the maintenance agreement would be.
Right. So that would be the action that we should probably take this evening, would be to follow up on that.
And I'd be happy to do that as quickly as I can, seeing as I was, this census is going to be important for. Yeah, just to get things. Right, the payment season is limited around.
Right, and frankly, Spal Management would want to know about this as well.
Yeah, sure. I mean, we've already done a lot of work to repair it and maintain it up to this point, so is it possible to still get a full audit pending the maintenance?
Where do we own?
I'm sorry?
I mean, you say we own it, and they own it. They own part of it, and we own part of it?
What parts?
Yes, well, it's kind of gray area because you have multiple.
Well, there's got to be a property line. This is the property line. It seems like we own this one by Village Lane and perhaps that Spal, that other strip. Oh, so we don't own half the road. We own a piece of the whole.
Just a piece.
Piece of the whole road.
And they want to split it in half with us.
Do we know what proportion?
It's fair. It's $9,500.
No, no, no.
What do you mean, what proportionally we own?
Yeah.
We'd have to look at that.
Do you have a copy of the map? All right, yeah, so if you follow, sorry, I'm going to prepare on this one.
Yeah, this just came in.
If you follow this road down, pretty much that is what we would own.
Right in here?
Yeah, and so this area, right in there.
And this whole thing costs $9,000, the whole thing?
Yeah, $9,500.
So why would we pay for the whole thing? I mean, half of it.
That's a question to ask. I mean, we just got this.
That's where I came in, Scott.
Yeah. And there's some agreement.
I sent the board's email the other night. All the properties that we researched as part of our work, one of those properties is this Spal property. On the map, I'll let memorize now. It's by Perron, and if you call up that map by Perron, you'll see at that corner that, yes, Village of Pittsburgh does own that chunk of the road, but there is an easement over that. Now, perhaps it's just an access easement, but there's no specifics on who does what. I don't know until we pull that easement and confirm. And perhaps, perhaps it's silent, perhaps it won't say anything, in which case, you know, perhaps this is a good deal. I have no idea, but I just.
So you think the easement is running to Spal from our?
Well, I'm pretty sure that there has to be at least an access easement going through there for Spal to legitimately get to this property.
Right.
So there may have been a maintenance provision in there, too, as well. I don't know. I do recall something about an easement, but I'm pretty sure it was just access out right there. Okay.
So the bottom line is we need to sort it out.
Yeah, just so you can be confident in your decision.
Yeah, before we can take action.
Is there another meeting this month?
Yeah. Yes, yes. And I also think, you know, frankly, Spal Management would want to know about this as well.
Yeah.
That it would affect them as well in terms of.
So who's coming to us for the money?
Spal.
Spal, so they know about it, right?
Maybe.
Let's find out.
Oh, they don't know that.
Give a question.
They may or may not.
Okay, so that's the action. We're going to do some digging, come back with the easement, get the information. Okay, great. And Renee has a question.
The timeframe, were they looking to do this this fall?
Yes, soon as possible.
Yeah.
Do you want the plans closer?
Kind of, depending, mostly mid-November. So we do have a little bit of time. Right in the contractor is not quote solid.
Yeah.
Because most contractors are.
Well, I mean, we are where we are.
It's one of those, yeah.
Yeah.
Which is not.
We're trying.
We could take advantage of that. It's half the cost of.
Yeah.
I should be able to find that tomorrow. The easement tomorrow is online, for sure.
You probably have, like, the page memorized and the paragraph.
Yeah.
I definitely need to understand more about this because I'm not following. I mean, I'm not following why Spal's coming to us when we only own a little chunk.
Spal has taken responsibility for a lot of the maintenance in that area. If you look at that picture, you will see kind of a darker spot along one of these others that recently repaid themselves and also repaired and replaced a lot of that cluttered work. So whether there's a maintenance easement, if they know about it or not, they've taken the responsibility on themselves.
All right, I'm going to take 30 seconds more. We own it here?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Yes.
So why wouldn't that be their responsibility?
If we have a maintenance easement or an agreement for the easement.
All right, so orient me, how do we get into the DPW property?
Way through there.
So this way?
Yeah, the other way.
This way?
Nope. Start from.
This way. Yeah, okay, all right. All right, got it.
Okay.
Yes, like Jeff and her, looking at this. I want to know how we can go about splitting such a cost for the dollar amount because it's over the big, our threshold for quotes and different things. And they would be getting the, apparently, they got the bid quote in there.
Oh, from a legal standpoint, how do we manage that?
I'm going to leave now, if that's okay.
He barely sat down, and he's already getting something.
It's a requirement, and I just want to make sure.
Okay, we'll work on that offline.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, great. Any other questions for Zach on his report?
I'd have to go into the treasurer's report to look. There was one question that is probably yours to answer regarding tree root, I can't remember the words, that was quite, it was a pretty large expense. Does that ring a bell, about tree roots?
Oh, north main flower injection?
Yeah, was that it? Say it again?
North main flower injection?
Yeah. Oh, was that?
Bartlett?
No, that's Bartlett doing treatments to the oak tree and the ash trees.
Okay.
So that's a yearly thing that we have on all the ash trees to treat it for the year.
Right, okay, thank you.
Zach, I have just one question about your report. You said we continue to develop digital logs and spreadsheets. We're currently working on a log for sewer cleaning and for pump station inspections. I'm happy to help with that, so let's find some time and I can help you put those together.
Sure, as soon as Daniel's back. And we are staffed well enough to accept her upward time to do so. I'll keep you posted and open up and you guys work together.
Okay, and one other thing is that one of your teammates got married over the last couple of weeks. I'm wondering if we should perhaps provide some kind of gift for her. So I'll circulate an email and take up a collection, and maybe we'll get something nice for her.
Okay. She likes dogs.
What's that?
New dog.
A new dog. Dog toys, I don't know.
Yeah.
Great, okay.
I do have one thing to discuss if looking forward, because I have no questions.
You know, you had spoken and just given me a brief update on DPW and kind of where some things were in the village, and I think it might be helpful just to just kind of fill up, fill the board in.
With the DOT project?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it looks like a lot of the work is going to carry through into the spring of 2023, that being the Florida Coroner's area in particular. They're still waiting on parts for the traffic signals, but they still want to continue with milling and paving the road. In order to mill and pave it, they have to have the curb ramps cut out, and any work being done to those radiuses sorted out with the curbing. So they have asphalt to pave up to the curbing.
Temporarily.
Temporarily, what they're going to be doing instead of pouring concrete in those curb ramps with ADA compliant maxes, they're going to be paving them with asphalt similar to how the bump outs were done last year in front of SJ's on South Main Street and in front of Pontillo's on State Street. So it's a temporary fix to get us through the winter season until next spring when they can come back there and do things proper. So project's going to continue on for months still, it sounds like.
We're still dealing with supply chain shortages and also labor.
Labor.
Yeah, and huge.
And it's a big project. There's a lot going on. They've started to do some of the regrading in the areas that were excavated for the sidewalks and the curb ramps in preparation for backfilling with topsoil, and then they will see this fall.
Yeah.
So all those excavated areas should be restored fairly soon, hopefully.
Zach, there was one, a couple people have been asking about some of the steep inclines on the new sidewalk, and I remember you explaining that to me, but I didn't know if you wanted to explain. Some of them couldn't.
I was trying, but I'm sure I couldn't butcher.
Okay.
So because of the approach, you can only get so much of a slight angle to it. It's out of compliance because it has to be. There's no way around it with the slope.
You're talking about, like, Sutherland Street in particular, yeah.
Yep. So without digging down, you know, and replacing the entire length of sidewalk to have 2%.
To get that slope.
Yeah. There's some policy that allows them to get away with it, just given the natural circumstances with the curving of the sidewalk. So not much they can do about it other than make it as compliant as possible.
Okay.
And the reason why the section of sidewalk was tore out on Washington, on the west side of the road, was because the side of the existing sidewalk was, her other design engineers for the DOT was on private property.
Washington Avenue?
Washington.
Not street, Washington Avenue to Monroe, to Monroe, okay.
On the west side of the road. So I spoke with the engineer in charge of the project to try to come up with a solution to maintain the five-foot width on the sidewalk, and he would not budge in putting the sidewalk back on private property. So we agreed that the best solution to that would be to put a jog in the sidewalk, bringing it back out toward the road to maintain a five-foot width to the curb.
So that was a remedy on their part because they, previously, it was, they had no easement granted from that property owner.
Correct.
And so they were bringing it back into their right of way? Am I correct? Am I, okay, thank you. Okay.
Yeah.
Willie, did you have a question, or were you, I thought you had a question?
There's no way you can answer it, so I won't ask.
The meaning of life.
Yeah, the timeframe element, and I was just thinking ahead to the spring. And when you say the DOT, you know, spring, and I know we've got a big event happening in Pittsburgh in Mount May, and, you know, if there was any way that they could make sure that it's done prior to that.
Unfortunately, I have no control over that, other than, you know, being a man.
We thought it was a real issue. We're already leaning on them heavily.
Yeah.
We are, yeah.
And they're getting a lot done pretty quick. The bridge, you know, it was done pretty quick. The curb ramps that they're working on right now, they're getting tore out. I don't know if you've been down to Washington and North Main. That's all tore apart right now. So the curbing's getting ready to be put back in, and they'll frame it up and hopefully pour concrete there. And they're starting to work outside of the village into the town as well. They're just kind of out.
Yeah, they're all over.
Yeah, it's chaotic, but a lot's getting done. I can't.
Yeah, I know.
Say, we have the other hype, sorry.
Yeah, we're leaning on them. We are. We meet with them frequently.
Yep.
Few more than me, but.
Yeah, I talk to Kevin a lot, and he's the engineer in charge of DOT, and Ryan Garvey, who is the superintendent for Cold Springs, who's the contractor doing the work. We're in constant contact, and, you know, I'm giving all of the concerns that I hear to them in regards to the project and trying to keep them, you know, understanding of where everybody that lives within this village is with that project and their concerns as well.
Yeah, we've been putting out updates.
So far, they've been pretty responsive to everything I've brought to them, but some things are just, you know, it's just a procedure.
This is big. It's $8.4 million of work being done by the state in our village, so there's a lot of moving parts, you know. I do want to just bring up something. We had spoken about this, but I think it's important that the board hears this and also the public because we have so many streetlights out right now, particularly down on the end of South Main. And I know you've been in touch.
Yeah, I've been in contact with RGV many times in the last month and a half trying to get something sorted, the concrete, like the arched place on South Main Street. And again, I'm waiting to hear back from RGV on their investigation as to why those are out. Still waiting. I just reported them again this morning, so it's, you know, it's just back and forth like that, and I'm doing everything I can on my end.
Yeah.
The lights around the North Main Street Bridge are currently out because they were disconnected while the bridge, or the utility pole was being swapped out, and the contractor doing the work for RGV just has nothing back to reconnect them. So another call that I have on RGV. So another call that I have on RG&E trying to get that sorted out. And yeah, there are a few other lights that are out here in there.
It's ongoing and also that they're historic lights, so it's difficult for RG&E who owns those particular lights to find the parts and source them so that, you know, they're accurate and historically correct. So that's another piece.
We've spoken about this before as well. Where on the timeline schedule is the repainting of the, of the poles, the village light poles?
As soon as possible. If I can find time this month, we'll do it as, as long as the weather is.
But again, I'm hoping it's before.
Yeah, no, before spring, once the weather breaks, again, winter, it's going to be all hands on deck to clear this place up. That's the time and Chain Place, we've been waiting on that for, for the bridge to be open so the traffic wouldn't be so heavy going through there that we could actually get work done. We're chipping away at it, and we're fighting with weather, we're fighting with short handedness because I have two people out with COVID right now, so.
Yeah, you're doing your best.
Yeah, another element that I just have no control of.
Well, you know, I would like to say, you know, give you high fives on the painting at Chain Place. You know, we've gotten a lot of great feedback, I don't know if you've all been down there and you've seen all the crosswalks painted out and it's really highly visible. Yeah, thumbs up from right to.
Well, we talked about that last year.
Last year, I know, it's because of last year, we finally.
Well, we repaired forecatch basins down the road since the bridge has been opened. Repairing forecatch basins, we still have to do some patchwork, which we ran out of time and weather has not been in our favor every time that we've had time to do it, so we painted what we can, there still has to be more paint done. And what patchwork does, what we have there.
Okay.
And painting out the light poles we're going to.
Yep, and we're also looking at painting the clock as well, refreshing that, so.
We're, White Brothers, who was taking over the clock maintenance account, they're, I'm just waiting on a quote from them to dismount the clock and maybe take it away and paint it.
Yeah, they might take it back to their shop, it's probably easier for them to do that. So we'll all have to look for another way to tell time. Okay, any other questions for Zach right now? Okay, thank you, yep, one more thing from you, sure.
Um, going back to Lacy Sawyer, the write-off that her family did for donations in her passing, asked people to donate to the Heart Department of the Maine Society and also plant a tree in her name. Not sure if the board would like to recognize that by finding a location and offering a list of trees to her family to decide from and planting a tree.
Yeah, why don't we reach out to her family and get them involved in that? I think that'd be a great idea, just to plant a tree in remembrance.
I think there are other people in the village too that I would like to recognize, Frank Alusha, be specific.
That'd be great, yeah, let's, let's, let's do that, for sure.
Um, and Peter Bessie, currently we, he's hired at thirty-two hours a week up until beginning of December. I'm being shorthanded right now and without having a gardener, and I'm not putting the eye bag out for a gardener this year because we're already too late in the season. By the time I get somebody in, we're going to be in the winter, so it just doesn't make sense at this point. I'm going to wait until early, late winter next year and approach this again. But Peter Bessie, thirty-two hours a week right now, there is one available to be able to bring him on forty hours a week up through the beginning of December if that's possible.
Oh, just so you get the, a little bit of the extra.
Yeah, another eight hours a week from, yeah.
Short handed.
He's learned a lot in short time and he's come in a lot regularly at work, so.
Yeah, I would entertain a motion to approve that, I think that's a good idea through, through December.
Through December, yes.
Yeah, to close out this particular season, yeah. I'll entertain a motion, is there a motion to approve increasing Peter Bessie's to forty hours a week through December? At the same pay rate?
At the same pay rate.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Renee, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call please.
Trustee Lantheer?
Hi.
Trustee Lightkit?
Hi.
Trustee Stetser?
Hi.
Trustee Keating?
Hi.
Mayor Plummer?
Hi.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you guys, sorry that was long, I'm done.
No, well, you covered a lot, thank you. Okay, next up, we have the treasurer's report.
Correct, you received the, any questions?
Or Zach? Motion? Motion to approve? Anybody?
Someone?
I, I did have one question, it was the Williamson Law Book Company Highway Support, support? What is that, it's a big number?
Superintendent. Uh, it's the superintendent program, it's the software they use.
Oh, okay.
It's normal fees we pay every year.
Okay, thanks.
Is that a second to the motion?
There wasn't a second?
No seconded, okay. Roll call please.
Yep, trustee Stetser?
Hi.
Trustee Lightkit?
Hi.
Trustee Lantheer?
Hi.
Trustee Keating?
Hi.
Mayor Plummer?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up.
Uh, may financials.
Financials, okay. That was my next question, actually.
Okay.
You are up through where, what, what have you been able to close as of September eighth?
I have closed through May, we went into our A U D process. I'm waiting for the accountant to tell me the books for last year are completely closed.
Please tell people what A U D stands for.
I'm sorry, we have all these acronyms we use, it's the Annual Update Act, we think it's filed with the state controllers. We anticipate receiving that next week, the captain has received everything he needs to compile the report. I'm hoping to have it over the board next meeting. At that point, I'm going to also have, touch up all the other financials and they will be fingers crossed, you know.
Great. Yes.
Justin, I had one question as well, related to a point that I brought up at the last meeting on the default expenditures. And so at the last meeting, we had a set of finances in front of us that was showing that we had exceeded the budgeted amounts with two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars.
Correct.
Um, and it's corrected in this version of the financials because we did the transfers at last meeting, which is good. I, I guess, I, I still have some concerns about that, I know that it, it might be too much to ask. It's certainly too much to ask to consider, we're always going to fall under budget, but I just wanted to bring that conversation back to the table to see if there's a way that we can ensure that in more cases, it's coming from the board for approval if we're exceeding budgeted amounts.
Typically, we do do that and looking back and looking at the previous treasurer's financials and our budget transfers, there was nothing on a line with what I presented. It's usually around the amount, there's about three, four times a year you see them where we have to make those amendments. Like I already know, if we move with doing the paving, I already received notice from New York State Retirement, the bill's going to be a little higher than we were told, so I need to make an adjustment there. So I am anticipating if we're making some other purchases that were planned, we're going to have to move some money around and I will bring those to the board as soon as I am aware of them and can make those financial transfers. So yes, I agree, you should be transferring the money prior, in some cases it's just not possible. Like I said, our genie, some things we just don't anticipate, when you get down to the end of the year, you know, the hope is you want to move money from other points, so you're not, but, you know, you don't want to over budget every line. So we shift the money as needed during the year, but can we always do it prior? No, and is this anything different than any other municipality? No, but I do agree, we should do it as we see it come, like I said, I see retirement, we're going to have to make an adjustment. Already know that.
Yeah, some things you don't see coming.
No, you don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I agree.
Okay.
Dorothy, I had a follow-up from the question about, so it's closed through May.
Yep.
And when you took over the, the first couple of months to close, took a little while and then it seemed like you were gaining some pretty good momentum in getting them closed. What's your anticipation of when you could close, June, July, August?
I'm hoping when I get back from conference next week, I'll be closing June and July and August will fall very quickly. Right now, I'm just waiting on the, on our accountant, I want to call him in order. The accountant tells me, when Mike says, Dorothy, we're good, you don't need to make any further adjustments. And with the software, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't really move forward to the next month until I completely close out for the year. So I don't make any adjustments until I'm told, maybe we're good for last year. So as soon as I get, I'm hoping if we get the A U D next, next week, as anticipated, it's closed, it's done, so I can move forward.
Okay, so that's the bottleneck.
That is.
My other question for you was on the second quarter tax payment of a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Ballpark, that seemed pretty close to what we'd budgeted, but you, refresh my memory.
Um, when I looked at the number, when we budgeted for this year, we increased it to six something. It's right in the ballpark, if not higher. I think I was running about one seventy a month, year quarter, and it's running one eighty-six. So we are so far ahead of the ballgame, but I don't want to jinx it, yeah.
Okay, thanks, not wildly off?
No, we are not wildly off, I was thrilled to see the number.
No, it's, it's actually pretty much tracking.
Yeah, no, it is tracking as I anticipated. We didn't want to track to our highest amount we received this year because then we're overestimating and if things changed and the way the sales tax came in, I didn't want to have us counting on funds that weren't going to be there.
Yeah, I also like to add, we've, we've had our deputy treasurer out for, for two weeks. You know, so you've been picking up other duties as well.
I was hoping to be further along, but again, I was always waiting on the accountant, getting him settled and I guess school districts are picked up at this time as well.
So there's, there's a few other factors, but, okay. What's next, please?
Um, is there any further questions?
Do you have any questions?
No, no, do we need a motion to approve the?
Yeah, sorry, there we go. The may financials.
I'll make a motion then, to approve the may financials to present.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Lantheer?
Hi.
Trustee Lightkit?
Hi.
Trustee Stetser?
Hi.
Trustee Keating?
Hi.
Mayor Plummer?
Hi.
Motion passes. C O G, this has come up, we file with the certified local government a report every year. Going back through the records, our previous records clerk, that office, that department has always filed that report since I came in, ended I come in two thousand thirteen, and they filed it on a yearly basis. That report isn't due in November, with seeing what was going on, this was brought to my attention, I went up, I seen the last time they filed the report was two thousand nineteen. I reached out to the state parks that run Chippewa, and I've talked to four people. They've had some change rounds at Chippewa and some people are still working from home. I talked to three people who were concerned, so we can get it resolved, but they're not the people, any person I need to deal with. I have a phone call out to, I think it's Linda McKay, and an email as well to her, so we can get it all resolved. We'll be filing our reports and getting that updated as soon as possible. I think it has to be done digitally online, so there's nothing I can just jump in and do, so.
Yeah, they have to set, they have to set you up, is my understanding, with the format to be able to do that.
Where was the email going, it very well could have been going to a previous employee and it never came in my inbox.
Right, right.
So we'll get that straight.
My understanding is you went through the computer, you couldn't find any records, anything even.
Actually, I just found the paper records and saw it was submitted in two thousand nineteen and I couldn't find a file after that. So my thought is, we haven't submitted since two thousand nineteen.
So, and then, and then my understanding as well is that you'll just simply, you know, catch up on those two reports and then.
Our next report is like November. So we'll get it all taken care of and I'll talk to them and we'll get it resolved. It's just one of those things, apparently, kind of similar.
Okay, and as part of being a C L G, we're also going to follow through on training for our boards.
I'd like, I'd like. I'd like to speak to that, because originally, actually back when I was a trustee, there was two hours required for training. At my recommendation, the board had approved, doubling it to four. I was just contacted by the chair of the H P V, Jeff Pollak, and he has set up training through the Landmark Society with the preservation director. So there's going to be, I think, a series of sessions. And the good news is, is that they've agreed to let us tape it. So it can go, you know, people can go back and review things and it'll be, you know, with a Q and A and all of that after the training. So I think that's great, it'll probably even, it'll probably exceed actually what is required of the boards, yes, so. So.
Thank you. I have another question, I wonder if, if the clerk might consider, the mayor might consider deferring the review of the minutes until we finish all the meeting?
Um, as long as all, every trustee and board member's going to be here.
Okay.
That's my concern because every time I lose someone, I can't approve them and we have minutes from April and.
I understand.
Yeah, that's my only concern, you can defer it, but we have to.
Everybody will, will be here, basically, yes?
Yes.
If you'd be interested in doing that?
No, I will not be here at the end of the meeting. So there, but there's one other thing before the, before, so within Dorothy's packet, there was a question about waiver of late fees?
Yeah.
One of the residents, so that's before the.
That is.
Meeting minutes, yeah, so do we want to vote on that?
Um, sure, we've already covered the sales tax, I was approached by a resident about waiving their penalties for their tax bill. I, state control does not give me that capability unless there are circumstances where the village office made a mistake. We did not make a mistake, this is an oversight on their part. I can't waive it, I directed them that they could request that waiver from the board, so.
I'm going to make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, a roll call, please.
Okay, trustee Lantheer?
Hi.
Trustee Lightkit?
Hi.
Trustee Stetser?
Hi.
Trustee Keating?
Hi.
Mayor Plummer? Hi.
Motion's passed, thank you.
Okay, fifty-four dollars and twenty cents is waived.
There you go, real quick, I just want to let the board know, when I get back from conference, and that is an update also for the board, me and Kristen will be at conference all next week, I will be available by phone if there is an urgent matter or email as always, I will be in touch with the office, so the office will be a little short-staffed.
They're with us.
But in addition, after we get back, and I'm going to be talking to some vendors, I'm hoping to start looking for the new phone system for the office if the board agree to win the budgets and just, and there's no surprises when I turn the votes in for the board's vote. Okay?
Oh, yeah, great, music on hold.
Okay, so it's indicated trustee Keating will not be here if we wait, is that my understanding, Dan? I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Yeah, so I'm only here till seven thirty.
So.
Because the first two sets in particular, because I was absent, so that, that's the critical.
Yeah, yeah.
At least the first two?
At least do the first two.
Let's do the first two.
Can we please, I hate to be demanding, but.
Well, it's important because these get posted, are there any, you want to go through? Which one, are we starting with, the twenty-sixth?
April twenty-sixth, I received some adjustment.
Amendments.
Amendments, adjustments, and I'll make those corrections as requested.
I'll make a motion to approve the April twenty-sixth meetings with the amendments and corrections.
Seconded.
Nope, I think that was a tie.
Okay, just to make sure who I'm calling. Okay, trustee Lantheer, you're going to be abstaining. Trustee Lightkit?
Hi.
Trustee Stetser?
Hi.
Trustee Keating?
Hi.
Mayor Plummer? Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Dan wasn't there for April twenty-eighth.
Yeah, these were complicated, who was there, who wasn't there?
Yeah, we had, you know.
All right, so, okay, so you have three, for April twenty-eighth, you have a.
I'll make, you've got corrections?
I have a correction.
Motion to approve the April twenty-eighth minutes with corrections.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, trustee Stetser?
Hi.
Trustee Lightkit?
Hi.
Trustee Lantheer, trustee Keating will need to abstain, Mayor Plummer?
Hi.
Motion passes. Okay.
We're kind of on a roll.
We only have two more to go.
Yeah, should we just kind of plow up?
Yeah, because I have to, I was not at the meeting on June fourteenth, so.
Yes.
All right, we got to keep going then, I'll make a, did you receive any corrections?
No, I didn't.
So this is for Tuesday, April twenty-eighth?
Oh.
Is that the one?
June fourteen.
I'm sorry, that's what I, I went right back, I'm already, I'm sorry, I'm waiting, there we go.
I do have a correction on this one, I, I don't understand it, it says that I arrived at seven twelve, so the meetings started at six thirty. It says that I arrived at seven twelve, but it also said that I seconded the call to order motion, so some things are missed.
That's me.
That could be from your template.
I'll double check and correct it.
We felt you in spirit.
So I'll make a motion to approve the June fourteenth minutes with the seven twelve P M time removed.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, trustee Lantheer?
This is the twenty-eighth?
No, Brian, fourteen.
June fourteenth.
Thank you, hi.
Trustee Lightkit, you abstain. Trustee Stetser?
Hi.
Trustee Keating?
Hi.
Mayor Plummer?
Hi.
Motion passes.
We're cruising now.
June thirtieth.
I don't see June. I don't see June thirtieth. It goes from July, June fourteenth to the July twelfth.
That is me. January.
July twelfth?
July twelfth, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Did we have any corrections of that? Do we have to say that?
Didn't receive any corrections.
Yeah, perfect.
Looks like everybody was there, so here we go. Trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Trustee Liken.
Hi.
Trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
July nineteenth?
Yep.
I just had two quick corrections on that, if no one else sent them. Uh, the second, the member, uh, who made the second is not present on the TYS or Internet Council.
Oh. Okay, I'll get it corrected.
Any other correction?
Just those two.
Okay, you have, okay. Okay, is there a motion as amended?
Make a motion to approve the July nineteenth minutes as corrected.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Okay, trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Trustee Keating, you would abstain. Trustee Liken.
Hi.
Trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, that was kind of record time.
Oh, yeah.
Through several months. Okay, on to meeting items. First, first item on the agenda is John Wimbach regarding short-term vacation rentals.
Evening, everybody. Thank you.
Hi, John.
For letting me do this tonight. I've got some literature that I'll pass out. I think I got it.
Okay, we'll share.
There are a couple of these copies. Yeah, there's a bunch of copies. There you go, I got enough. Yeah, I got, I, I brought a couple extra just in case. Uh, again, thank you for allowing me to address the board tonight. I'd like to discuss the operation of what I call the airbed and breakfast in the village. And right now, it's my understanding that there's at least eight that I know of operating in the village, and there's more planned. And it's also my understanding, I've seen some emails going back and forth, that there's no village code provision that regulates the Airbnbs. So what I'm asking the trustees to do is enact a moratorium on the establishment and the operation of Airbnbs within the village. Uh, while this might seem extreme, I feel it's the only way that we can properly determine if allowing an Airbnb to operate is any different than operating motel in a residential district. Uh, if item one is deemed to allow Airbnbs, I think we need to assess the rules and the regulations that airbed and breakfast, Verbo, and other organizations have in place for their, um, participating properties, advertising what the rental agreements are, and just general, uh, operations. Uh, determine if the, if those rules and regulations provide enough protection for the village, uh, the host resident, and the adjoining neighbors. I think we should ru, uh, look at other communities' rules and regulations on Airbnbs for plagiarizing purposes. Uh, I mean, if somebody's done all the work, let's take a look at it and see what they've done. Thank you, uh, what he said through the minutes, please.
No pride in ownership for anything on Ecode.
And, and I think we need to determine an implementation process for any existing and/or future Airbnbs. This could include special permits, registrations, inspections, et cetera. Again, it would be my preference that we don't have them at all, because I don't want a commercial operation in the neighborhood. But, uh, if they're going to be here, I think we need to control them. So, um, I'm confident that there's a lot of Airbnbs that operate without any negative instances at all, but those aren't the ones that you hear about on the nightly news. You know, you've got fires, you've got kids overdosing. Uh, you, you just hear all the horror stories, and I just want to make sure that, uh, those situ, those shit situations are either mitigated, lessened, uh, and I think we can do that if we institute reasonable, uh, rules. Now, there is an argument that residents should be allowed to benefit from their property, and it's valid. Profitability, however, cannot be achieved at the expense of another. The location of the Airbnbs will be predominantly in the residential zoning district, and the key there is residential. I'm pretty sure that operating an Airbnb becomes a commercial operation which is not allowed in residential districts without a special permit, and special permits have conditions. I think that these conditions should be developed by the village as part of the requested moratorium, and then it would then become the responsibility of any resident seeking to operate an Airbnb to make an application to the planning board to obtain a special permit prior to beginning operations. I also feel that, uh, Airbnb, Verbo, any of these organizations that sponsor these rentals would be informed that if they operate within the Village of Pittsburgh, that there's requirements that have to be met before they can do that. And, uh, some of the potential issues that I see, you know, you've got lighting, you've got parking, you've got hours for, uh, actually operation, outdoor activities, noise, and garbage. And, you know, there could be others. Uh, these are just the ones that popped to my mind. Um, one major issue that I have is non-resident ownership of an Airbnb. For many years, we had the same issues with the zombie houses, where they were owned by out-of-state corporations, banks, or other people, and you couldn't get ahold of them. And, and if you have an issue, you know, who do you call? So, uh, I think that i- if you can't mandate residency, you should at least have a number that's good 24/7 for somebody that you can call and talk to. We just went through a holiday weekend, and I could see having a problem on a Saturday night, you can't get ahold of anybody until Tuesday. So, uh, not very helpful at all. I also think it would be prudent to allow only one air and Airbnb situation in any one residence. I don't think that we should have multiple apartments within one building, uh, that are up for, uh, rental on a short-term basis. Also, uh, if these are commercial, uh, operations, do they fall into commercial categories for inspections? Cooking equipment, uh, requirements, uh, alarms? Uh, what do we do about inspections? And should they have, uh, commercial inspections and commercial requirements? So anyways, that, uh, I don't know if any of the occupancies become an issue as well. So I think there's a lot of things that we need to look at to make sure that we're protected. And going back to the fact that we don't have anything, uh, to control Airbnbs right now, similar to a code section that we have for the regular bed and breakfast, I looked through it, and two ten dash twenty point four, uh, the use list, uh, item C states that use is not listed, and those identified with a hyphen are expressly prohibited. So Airbnbs aren't listed as a permitted use, so I don't think we should be allowing them to operate anyways, because they don't have a special permit. And, uh, I know Jeff can look at that and correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, that's just my interpretation of it. Uh, so just in closing, from a village risk perspective and for the protection of adjoining neighbors, I think that the proactive approach I'm advocating, I think it's preferable to, let's wait and see what happens. Uh, I don't want to be on the nightly news. That's probably extreme, but I'd much rather prefer to have, uh, protections in place. And just to make sure that I wasn't out on a limb, I took two or three afternoons, and I went around and talked to a bunch of my neighbors. And in those probably six hours, sorry, my fingers don't work well, uh, I got forty-one signatures, uh, of neighbors that I talked to, and I tried to go to different areas of the village, you know, so I was getting different perspectives. And, uh, the petition basically states the same thing, that I'd like to put a moratorium in place uh, until we get, uh, reasonable controls in place for this. And I did goof up. I got three signatures on Line Street, so, uh, they're identified. But, uh, the biggest issue with getting petitions is, is you knock on a door and people want to talk, and you spend ten, fifteen minutes.
Well, they're your neighbors.
I, I know, but I'm sure you understand that when you go out for elections. But, uh, I actually had another eight to ten people that agreed with what I was saying, but they just weren't comfortable putting their names on a petition. So, um, that's when I found out where the ones are operating right now. There's two on Bowton, one I think it's on Jackson, there's two on South Main Street, there's one on Washington, and from what I understand, a couple others, so. But that, that's my concern right now, and, and again, that's what I'd like the board to consider.
That's for all.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any? Yeah, I, I have something, John. I'm, I'm here, uh, on, online. So thank you for your input, um, and it's something definitely to consider. I do want you to know, during the code rewrite, we talked about this a lot, and we kind of always kept coming back to the same place. And this was across several boards. This was across a, a few different members of the board, and we, we kind of kept coming back to the same place. And that same place was something along the lines of, um, that people have a, a right to be able to, u- use their property in a way, um, to, uh, you know, make money on it. And, um, so we didn't, we got, we got tied up around that. The second thing that we looked at was, we looked at some places that had tried to put more stern regulations on it, and that had its own set of problems. And, um, the next thing that we kept coming back to was the fact that these companies themselves, VRBO, Airbnb, have their own, um, uh, processes within them and the ability to rent them, that does a lot of the checks that, and perhaps even more so than we would do. And then the last thing that we came back to was, was something that is, uh, tough to manage, and then it's the fact that sometimes my own existing neighbors are loud, and sometimes they have parties, and sometimes, you know, not everybody is a perfect neighbor at all times. It doesn't mean that we won't consider it, but just know that we have, and we went down some roads that were challenges, um, whenever we thought of, and this was, you know, Frank and Peggy and, um, uh, other people that were on the board, we kind of kept coming back to the same place.
And, and my initial response to that is, that's why you have residential neighborhoods and residential zoning districts, and that's for residential use. If somebody wants to make money off their property, I understand that, but you're introducing a commercial use into a residential neighborhood. And if you say, well, uh, we have to allow the resident to make money off of their property, uh, where does it stop? Uh, if I want to operate a nail salon in the front part of my house and live in the back, does that become okay because I'm trying to make profit off of my residence?
Well, that's something different that isn't allowed in the code.
Well, maybe it was a poor example, but to say that just because somebody is allowed to be profitable in their residence.
Clearly, there's a lot to discuss here, so why don't, um, and Dan, do you have any other questions? Because I like to just poll the board members and, you know, have everybody kind of just weigh in.
No, just to, just to reiterate, uh, thank you, John, for raising this.
Yeah. Okay, Lily, do you have any thoughts on this?
I am very interested in discussing the possibility of a moratorium. My one concern about a moratorium is the length of time it would take us to enact a moratorium. It would have to go to public hearing, and so on and so forth. Is there a, a more, um, time, uh, in the interest of time, would, would there be a, another way to approach the concept of moratorium? In other words, putting a, not permitting them for, until we get this ironed out. Only a moratorium, would they always be a code that we add?
Yeah.
Excuse me, she's, she's asking our attorney.
No, but I had a question about what she said, so not permitting ones that already exist or not permitting new ones, Lily.
Whatever way I want to phrase it, I just, until we get an opportunity to deal with it, uh, conceptually in our code, I'm wondering if there, I'm asking our attorney if there's a way besides moratorium, which could take some time.
I, I can't think of one that doesn't, wouldn't be official. I mean, it's the same as passing all over the law.
The moratorium.
They take, that takes the time that it takes to draft the legislation, get it to public hearing, have the public hearing, and vote on it.
In the meantime, I know the board has discussed, um, on code update, and I think the date of that, I think we set the workshop date for that. I thought it was the twentieth. I could be mistaken.
It's that's it?
It's somewhere.
I wrote down the twentieth on my calendar. Twentieth is set, yes, because we were going to talk. I don't think it was.
About ARPA. That was the ARPA workshop.
That was the ARPA, where we.
I don't know about the code. ARPA, ARPA was on the twentieth.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought we had also set a date for code.
We do want to, we do want to have a code workshop, and I was just thinking that I had written it in my notes that I think that this sort of even deserves perhaps even its own workshop, because there's, we've never addressed it, as John rightfully pointed out, you know? There's a lot of moving parts to this, and I think we probably would want to have, um, you know, take all of this under advisement, and then schedule its own, a workshop with the public so we can really kind of vet things and see how to proceed, you know? And then, then wrap that into the code, because the code workshop that we're doing now, sort of the low-hanging fruit, as we're calling it, it's not, you know, a lot of discussion on us tweaking and tuning on some things. This is really writing code. I mean, this is kind of a big enchilada in my mind. So perhaps we can put them on a parallel track.
Sure, oh, yeah.
And begin the process.
And then end up wrapping it in.
And simultaneously begin having, um, meetings on, on this very subject. And I think it is deserving of its own special meeting. And, um, and I think that, you're right, John. I think we need to address it sooner rather than later.
Oh, Sue, yes, hi. Um, I just want to say too.
Name, name an address, please, just for the record.
I'm going back to John's wife. Um, I just feel as though, you know, Pittsburgh has some of the highest real estate in the world around me, and that I think if it's not handled correctly, you're jeopardizing all the investments that people have made here. And I think the residents' protection should come first.
Thank you. Yeah.
Um, one thing I wanted to add, um, I, I'm, I'm not against sitting and talking about it. I'm strongly against a moratorium on it, and the, the thought of, now, and the thought of taking away somebody's livelihood so that we can have a bunch of conversations, again, that we've already had, I, I think that's opening us for, up for all kinds of trouble.
Um, Steve, Steve, are you still online?
Oh, yeah, I've had my hand raised since this started.
Of course you have. Um, no, because I know we, you know, you're right, we have some existing al- already in the village that you've identified, and, um, you know, just for my own identification for everybody here, are we receiving complaints?
No, there is, there are no complaints. Um, there have been no complaints in regard to it. But one thing I want to say, I am, I, I will agree with John in, in part of this in that I've always been a proponent for a rental code, um, in the village, a rental registration, um, so you could inspect rentals. To me, if you're renting your house out, whether it's by the night, by the month, by the six months, you are, you are making money on your property. So I don't, me personally, don't, I don't feel like you can harm somebody who wants to rent on a short-term basis, basis when his next-door neighbor's renting his home for profit. Um, and you got to be, you got to kind of be careful with the whole short-term thing and how we go about this, because we got a golf tournament coming up next year where people are going to be renting their properties in the village for short-term. Um, you know, they make a lot of money in a short time. Those, if you're going to call it commercial, all those then would be commercial ventures also. Um, and, you know, I see nothing wrong with Airbnb as long as there's no issues. As soon as you have a complaint, I think if we had code, uh, on hand, then you would be able to stop that Airbnb based on, on the rules that were created. I don't, I'm with Dan. I don't believe a moratorium, you know, should be put in place when the time could be spent to actually develop the code. I provided the board with Grease's short-term, um, rental code. I believe that that, you know, we could use that, or whatever John has provided, and come up with a code that will work for the village and all of village residents.
So that's why we can have a workshop.
Right.
Yeah, Lily, sure.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that, Stephen, in not voting on the board. So I will say this, that we're not talking, we're talking about, I don't believe, and I don't believe it from anything that John has indicated, that, uh, we're talking about individuals during the golf tournament who want to rent out their homes. We're not talking about that. We're talking about a business running out of your home. We're talking about a business running out of your home of for months and years into perpetuity, that you're using your home as a business. Any of us, if it's me or anyone in the village who would like to run out their home for a month or a few weeks to anyone, well, tournament aside, we're not talking about that. I don't think the village wants to regulate or be involved in that. That's your own personal business. We're not talking about that at all. We're talking about outside entities primarily, who do not live in the village, some of them who live out of state, who are purchasing properties and eroding the housing stock, very limited housing stock that we have in the village for of their business. And at the very least, they should be taxed as, on a different rate, because it's not a residential use. And we're removing the opportunity for young families to, and I know in Saratoga Springs, they have had this issue because they have an industry with a lot of workers in the, in the entertainment or leisure industry, and they have no place to live, because all of the places they were living are being now utilized as Airbnbs. So it is a, it is a huge, much bigger problem, and and affects us because we're a very small community, and we have a very limited stock, as I said, of homes. And how many do we allow on a street? Do we, I'll use Jackson Park as an example, because it's a short street, would have four homes on there, and now are Airbnbs. So what happens to the, to people who have lived here for 40 years, and now they've got four Airbnbs on it? We need to be involved and and have some sort of regulation. We're not talking about, I don't think, at this point, saying no to all being Airbnbs. We really need to get our arms wrapped around it, just like we have done any other situation. And as John said, yes, they have a right to make money on their property, but not at the neighbor's expense.
You know, I want to add to that, because I think you really, Lily's really, I think, captured something that's so important for our community. I went through this in Fort Lauderdale right before I moved up here, moved back here. And it was a huge issue, where people would come in and buy up maybe four, five, six houses all of a sudden on a, in an old neighborhood on a block, and convert them to Airbnbs. And it changes the fabric of the community and the neighborhood. And it changes how you interact, just even in terms of, you know, who's your neighbor, knowing your neighbor. So I think you've really raised a solid point that we really should, you know, drill down on.
Yes, we do.
You know, in our, in our workshop. I think that's, that's absolutely crucial, so.
So Lily, can I ask you a follow-up question? Is there any evidence of of these outside entities buying up homes and converting them, the doom scenario that you painted?
I can speak to one specifically, Dan. There is one on Jackson Park that is not owned by anyone who lives in the village, so they are not.
And they live in Pittsburgh close enough that their children attend Sutherland. So this is not somebody from a hedge fund who owns this, who lives elsewhere. So I want to be specific about that. I know exactly who that person is, and they live right outside the village. I would not call them an outside entity. I think that's really mischaracterizing that. I also think you know that.
If I could interrupt the one on State Street, it's my understanding that they're making two apartments, and it's an out-of-state owner.
They're dividing up a single-family home.
Well, it's always been rental, whether it was legal or not, but it's my understanding that it's going to be two luxury apartments, and the owner does not live in Pittsburgh.
Okay, but but that's allowed. You're allowed to own an apartment. And we're not talking about apartments. We're talking about Airbnbs, so.
Airbnb.
Well, right now it's allowed. See, that, you know, that's where we, that's where we are. So we all know this. I think we're, everybody's raising some really good points here. I'd like the other board members to weigh in, you know. And I do think we're headed towards this workshop, you know, singularly, not just wrapped into
the mechanics of that would be involved with a moratorium, but at least working on some.
Maybe Jeff can look into that.
It's the same timeline as with any local law.
Could I just, a quick comment? That 21040.4C says it's not allowed because it's not mentioned as a permitted use. That's how you shut them down.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I'm trying to bring this back to the board now, because you have, you have done a really nice presentation, and done some great work, and we're hearing good comments from people. Would you like to weigh in, Justin?
Yeah, sure.
Wait, did I answer your question? I mean, yeah, I mean, you're, you're, the timeline for a moratorium is exactly the same timeline as passing a local law.
I'm sort of trying to weigh the difference, and not that we, but if we wait, enact a moratorium, go through that process, and at the same time, work on enacting a local law, if that does make sense or not.
You do that.
That's why you do a moratorium. You do a moratorium and then to work on your law. That's why you do it.
Tell you one concern.
No, but I'm saying if we were to have a workshop, I'm looking at it, you know, week one, we do workshop, week two, we have a public hearing, and we work on changing the law, or take the, take that same timeline and turn it into enacting a moratorium.
I'd like to go right to the workshop and get it going.
Okay.
I think that's the important one.
Sure. So I wanted to say, well, Mr. Lindbeck, for sharing this information, there are certainly parts of this that I hadn't heard before. I have been hearing from residents more and more that short-term rentals are a concern to them. And I believe that, you know, you mentioned that maybe our code prohibits them. Personally, I'm not sure, but, and we're not the interpretative body for the code, there would be the code enforcement officer and the ZBA, but what is clear to me is that we're not intentional about what we want with short-term rentals, and I think we should be. To your point, it seems that most people I speak with would like some amount of regulation, even if that's only a rental registry, as our code enforcement officer was mentioning. So I'm very interested in having a workshop on this and discussing those ideas. I also think that a moratorium properly applied can be a good tool to make sure that we stay on track. And if we intend to regulate these to some extent, I would be in favor of the idea of talking about a very short-term moratorium, while we put those regulations in place. So specifically, what I was just thinking is something where it would be six months only for new Airbnbs. So of course, it wouldn't prohibit the ones that are inactive use right now, but for new Airbnbs, so that we may consider appropriate regulation.
That's a tricky thing, because there may be things in motion. So somebody might have bought a house, that kind of thing. So we're going to have to really talk through that. The idea of taking away somebody's livelihood is, is something I'm firmly against.
I understand, and I, you know, I think that putting this on the table for the board to discuss, we do have some agreement that there should be regulation around these. I think that having a moratorium with with those terms that I mentioned in relatively simple form, we could actually put that on the agenda and discuss it and have public comment on that.
Okay, great.
Yeah, my, my response to all of this is enforcement. How do we, how do we know that once you enact a moratorium, someone's violating? Unless there are problems, which you could presumably, and I'm not speaking one way or the other on the issue. I'm just wondering about the cost effectiveness of doing a moratorium, and I'm happy to draw one. But I'm also have, running around the back of my head the concept of, you know, and I haven't thought this all the way through, and I'd certainly want to talk to my count about it, but, you know, are the existing ones of pre-existing use? You know, it, it doesn't really seem like they would be, because they're coming as a residential use. I think, then, you know, that's going to be the problem. Where do you, where do you slice this, you know, to say one thing's a residential use? You know, I'm a little bit with Steve, not in terms of any way I feel about this subject. But if you've got a long-term annual rental in terms of the use issue, not in terms of whether it's right, wrong, or indifferent, how do you differentiate that from a two-day rental? It's the same use. It's only the duration that I think becomes problematic. So, I mean, it's kind of a complex issue in terms, and I think there's a recent federal court case on this that I will find. But you've got a lot of stuff in play here. It's not like saying we're going to go from a residential use to a business use. It's clearly, or from a business use to a residential use. Clearly, you know, it's pre-existing. Clearly, it's easily defined. But if you've got two different kinds of residential uses, I think that's where we're going to get a little bit rubbed. So that's a long way around answering. You have to decide what you think you're going to get out of a moratorium, whether it's worth the effort and expense to enact it, given that, how would you realistically enforce it? Because we already know about the ones that are, I'm not going to say problems, but evident.
They're existing.
We know the ones that are evident. We don't know all of the ones that are evident. So I'm really running out. I apologize. But it's, I mean, this is a pretty complex enforcement issue. It's not, I'm only speaking to that. I'm not speaking to whether or not there should be regulations.
I understand that. So it sounds like even drafting the moratorium may be more complicated than than for some other cases.
I think so. I mean, I'm trying to think what that would look like. It would look, there'd almost be as much debate around how you draft that as the local law itself, if you.
And we could just keep going ahead and working on the local law and getting it done.
I mean, in terms of devotion of resources, it feels like a long-term solution gives a better bang for your efforts than a short-term and long-term solution, especially when the short-term solution, I just, I have, I don't know how we enforce it.
I appreciate that. So I'd also be in favor of just scheduling in this plan a time to talk about short-term rental regulations.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, yeah. Renee, some thoughts here?
I am not in favor of a moratorium. I like the message of working for having a workshop, getting some feedback from the community. We have a little feedback here. And a moratorium sends a different message to me of halting everything. I don't think we have a run on people buying up the properties in the next, while we work on this. There may be one or two, but it's, it's more nuanced than than a moratorium would cover, I feel like. So I would prefer to, when I first came on the board, we did talk about a rental registry. We talked about all sorts of ideas, and I don't remember why, why we ran out of steam. Maybe we never reached agreement on what we wanted to do with the short-term rentals.
So we had some.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we, we have some great research that Steve did, and the rest of us did as well. So let's renew the conversation. It sounds like we want some accountability as part of this and some other things. So that's my two cents. Actually, there was more than two cents.
Yes, Dorothea.
I have a resident, I have two residents that would like to speak, and then Steve.
I'm on Steve, okay. Mr. Diaz, you can speak.
This is actually Mrs. Diaz. This is Emily at 81 South Street. I wanted to thank John for bringing this to the board. I do think it's an important thing to discuss. And sorry, John, you didn't knock on my door, so we couldn't chat as neighbors. But I just think with, like, COVID and the way that people are a lot more, like, flexible with their work now, and how they're earning their money, and like, the Rochester area being like such a hot real estate market, there is, I think, a lot of attention from out-of-state and, and other people who are looking at buying, like, investment properties. And what you said, Mayor Plummer, so eloquently, you know, I, I do worry about the fabric, you know, of our community changing if we were to all of a sudden get overtaken. I'm not saying that's going to happen, but I do think it's worth revisiting the conversation. And I would agree, I think a moratorium does feel rather harsh, but I look forward to a working session to hear how we can progress as neighbors on this.
Thank you. Okay. And there's another comment? Dr. Frost, you're able to speak?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to mention, can you hear me?
Yeah, you can.
Just wanted to mention that the coding officer brought to everyone's attention that a non-resident, quote unquote, was, quote unquote, running a business, quote unquote, and not living in the house, even though I own a good portion of the property. And so it seems to me that that question of of people not living in the house, and that they own and living and running a business would come under that code.
Thank you. Any other? I have, you know, the residents, so Steve, you're okay? Steve?
Yeah, a couple of things. I, I hope that you don't do a moratorium, because as somebody spoke, trying to enforce that would be an absolute nightmare. What do I do? Go up and ask people how long you're renting for? You know what I mean? It, to try and define that to people would be almost impossible. I do think time and money would be better served to do a workshop and work up a law, a local law, that would serve the village a lot better. And just real quick to Margot's point, the the two items are not the same. They're, you know, you're, you're trying to compare apples to oranges as far as one situation to another.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
I just want to clarify what I was saying.
Yeah, Jeff?
I wasn't implying that a moratorium isn't an absolutely proper thing to do when you're considering a change in zoning. It certainly is the right and proper thing to do. But certainly, I just, for instance, if you put a moratorium in for whatever kind of development, you can track, you can draw that and track that. Somebody comes in with an application, sorry, we have a moratorium and blah, blah. But nobody's, it's the enforcement piece of it that gets me a little bit here.
Because we don't have any existing code that has any requirements for that.
It's just seemed like it'd be a mess.
Just the logistics.
Yeah, so that, I mean, but to the point of a moratorium, that's certainly the appropriate response when you're in an area of uncertainty and want to gather yourselves and make what you consider to be the right result. I just think in this case, if you're, this is a really different animal.
No, I think that's a good point. You know, we've all agreed, we kind of want to get to work on this. You know, we'd like to get this workshop. I think, you know, we're all nodding here tonight, like, this, this is a good way to move forward with the community. So I think with that in mind, let's close this out. We have the action item now to set up a time for the workshop.
Do you want to throw some dates out now?
Yep, let's, let's throw dates out.
Looking at the calendar. Village calendar, not my own.
That's helpful.
Yeah. September 28th might be available, if it's available.
Do we have a regular meeting?
Yeah, we have a regular meeting.
A regular meeting is on September 29th.
Yeah, yeah. I was talking with me, I'm good. Hang on, Jeff's saying something.
I think there's a special HPV meeting.
I think that's the 26th.
26.
That week, though, yeah.
I have that in my head.
I think that is correct. You are correct.
Can you say that again?
Dorothea, for the record, you are absolutely correct.
Thank you. And then I, unless I can enlist Kristen for a meeting, I will be gone. So the next date I'm going to offer up is October 17th, and I want one Wednesday.
Well, what about the first, that first week of October?
You.
Yeah.
The 5th is unavailable. Outside of that, I would have to see Kristen's availability to serve the board for that meeting.
Yeah, yeah, it's a workshop. It's, you know, yeah. Are we tracking back to 5th of October?
You wouldn't want to do 5th. There's a meeting.
We would do the 6th.
You could do the 6th. You could do the 3rd, the 4th, the 7th.
No, we don't. 3rd, 4th, or the 13th. Then that Friday. No.
So you're the 3rd.
Monday, the 3rd?
Yeah.
Doesn't work for me.
Monday.
Thursday, the 6th does.
Thursday, the 6th works for you?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's good.
Okay. Does that?
I'm out of town, but I can definitely send my.
You can send all your information. Okay, we're all in. On Thursday, October 6th. Okay, we're all in then on Thursday, October 6th, and Renee will submit her comments to the board.
We are on the 6th.
Oh, you're not on the 6th? Oh, no, we, okay. Okay, so then, um, let's come up with another day.
What did we say about the 5th?
No, the 5th has another meeting.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I'm good. Thursday, Friday, that's Columbus weekend or something.
I don't know, I have it off the top of my head. I just know on Monday.
Tuesday, the 4th.
Thursday?
Tuesday, the 4th.
Prefer to not do it on the 4th.
No Tuesdays work for me.
No Tuesdays for Dan, no Tuesdays for Justin. Then we're in the following week?
What about the 5th?
There's already a board meeting.
Different board.
Where we've, kind of, one of us goes earlier.
Yeah.
Or is that just not a good idea?
We've talked about this.
Okay.
It creates confusion for residents. And B, you're asking residents to commit to two different meetings. So if they wanted to go.
Yeah, okay.
It's a lot to put on your plate. I'm.
I think that, that is tough.
I just, you know, one meeting a night is plenty for everybody.
Okay, so.
Sorry.
We are looking, well, we have a board meeting on the 13th, so we want to do, and then it's Columbus Day weekend, it's the 10th. She whiz.
As I said, we have the 28th. Does that sound good to anybody?
28th works for me.
28th of September?
Yeah.
I'm good.
That's not good for me.
That's a Wednesday. Oh, yeah, yeah.
What about the 29th? What's going on then?
We have our meeting.
Do before, we used to do that in the old days, but you're saying, no, don't do that anymore.
Well, maybe we should, just to kick it off. I don't know.
I, I mean, if the board wants to start earlier, like 5:30, bring an hour.
I mean, just to kick things off, just to get it up and running.
Absolutely.
You know, because otherwise we're all waiting in the 5th.
One board meeting, not two different boards.
So let's stick with the 29th then, folks. We're all in agreement with that. We'll start an hour earlier, 5:30. This way, we at least get the ball rolling. We start to engage, you know, with our community.
9, 29.
Yeah.
5:30. Correct? Or did you want to be earlier? 7 o'clock?
Maybe 5, really.
I, I can't, I teach to 4:40.
Oh, that's tough. 5:15. 5:30, let's just do 5:30 again. We're kicking it off, we're kind of, you know, framing it.
All right.
Yep.
Okay.
Do you want me there with them?
Yes.
I heard a yes. We always want to with the meetings, you know that. Be discussed, okay. But, you know, it would, it would be helpful, I think.
Asking for a calendar.
Yeah, well, put it on your calendar, please.
You can come in wet pants if you need.
Yeah.
To give you the night off.
He can wear his casual business suit. Okay, John, thank you very much, John. Thanks, good discussion. Thank you, we really appreciate it. Yeah. Thanks, Ann. Okay, next up. Yates again. I know, I know. All right. Scott, village engineer, some updates from you, please. Oh, wait, we missed the public hearings, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I apologize. Yeah, I just.
That was Jeff.
Yeah, Jeff gets credit. I need adult supervision, I think. Okay.
Scott, at least you get to stand up.
Yeah, there you go. You got some steps in. Okay, so we took this a public hearing for the, an application for a short-term retail business.
For David Jewett, this is for the Christmas tree stand that operates at the Pittsburgh Berry every season. He's seeking approval to do this. We would like to send it to public hearing if the board is agreeable. The hearing date, as it proposed to the board, is October 13th. So if the board is in agreement, do you move that forward?
I will make a motion that we hold a public hearing on October 13th in order to hear the application, David Jewett, for 4 to 4 North Main Street.
Well, second.
Trustee Lankier?
Aye.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Trustee Spencer?
Aye.
Trustee Keating has exited the meeting. Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Next up is setting a public hearing for an application for a special permit for 3 South Main Street.
I'm not sure if the African is here this evening.
I don't think so.
Okay, then I guess I'm representing him. This is for a special permit for a restaurant. I believe this is the same location that Pittsburgh House was in.
Like the. So want to set a public hearing for that?
Yes, and I would give the same date.
Same day.
Same date, same time. Only collusion.
I will make a motion that we set a public hearing to hear the application for a special use permit for 5 South Main Street.
I think it's 3 South.
3.
3.
Oh, it's a 3?
Yeah.
I don't know, I thought she said.
Yeah, they got to kind of.
Well, the application says 5, so. Oh, I'm saying, I'm going with 5.
All right.
I'm going with 5 on the application.
3 or 4, because.
I think it's all in you.
Oh, no, there's a two separate.
No, 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 I'm just saying, for public notice purposes, I'm not sure the address.
I'll verify. I'll verify tomorrow.
Okay, I will second.
It is 5 South Main.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brokop?
Trustee Spencer?
Aye.
Trustee Lankier?
Aye.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, great. Next up, Tom. Village engineer, there we go. More steps to get in.
Well, yeah.
Hello.
Interesting discussion on Airbnbs.
Well, actually, we're talking about a brand name. We really should say short-term rental.
Right.
You know. Between Verbo and Airbnb, they're just a couple of organizations.
So I'm here tonight to talk with you about some projects that I'm involved in and let you know where we are. I, I guess the first one is the, the survey of the DPW arboretum lands that I shared with you by email. I shared with you the research that we did on all the adjoining properties and all the mapping that we could find from a resource.
To be fair, we have not, I have not seen the file because it's so big. She was not able.
Oh, you couldn't, it's huge, so.
The first one that I sent was on a Dropbox. So you would.
Huge.
Go to the Dropbox and you can download from the Dropbox. The other one was 12 megabytes, I think, and should have been transferable as well, but.
I think that was the drawing which.
About that, I got. Again, drawing, no problem.
Oh, okay.
But the background that you just mentioned, I just want to clarify, we're not even seeing.
Yeah, that's via, that's via Dropbox. So you just go into the Dropbox and download from there. So you shouldn't have any.
Okay.
Capacity issues, I don't think. But the purpose of sending that was to show you the, the content of what's behind all this. And a portion of that was the abstract of title that we got recently updated. So after going through many, many hours of studying all that information and putting the pieces of the puzzle together, we came up with a boundary determination that I shared with you in that drawing, that in addition to occupation, I would call it, as we located it last April, it may not be current in terms of occupation out there. Right now, there may have been some improvement since we did our original recovery work. But I, I feel that the value in the, giving you the drawing and the information that I've done, I think you, the boards, are at a point where you may want to take the next steps as I see them in terms of defining what portion of this property is to be dedicated to arboretum use and what portion is to be dedicated to DPW use and how the two can, you know, behave, if you will, or act with one another simultaneously. Because I don't think at this point, you, you had any definition to that. We, we wanted to make sure that we had at least the acreage that had been reserved for the arboretum in order to really have this conversation. So we have 11.2 acres, and I believe 10 acres was reserved for the arboretum. So according to my math, at least 1.2 acres available for the DPW. When I look at the drawing, I say to myself, okay, who gets, who gets the property that encompasses the driveway, for example? That's quite extensive, that's a lot of property. Would that be assigned to the DPW, which I think might then reduce their ability to do any type of expansion? Or is it, or is it going to be prorated in some sort of way? I mean, I think these are discussions that the board has to have internally to figure out, you know, how you want to divide this up. Another thought that comes to mind in looking at this in that I've been involved with you in doing RFPs, and one of the items that I'm going to speak with you about is the RFP on South Street. I'm thinking maybe you're a candidate for an RFP with respect to securing a design consultant, perhaps a landscape architect, to look at this now mapping and other features that we can provide that consultant to design this piece of property in a way that satisfies both the DPW and the arboretum. That's.
Yeah, we have spoken about that in the past. I know you had brought it up to the board that you have somebody really take a look at, and, you know, Zach, maybe you want to weigh in on this too, but take a look overall of what, what the DPW does need to be able to function with your work yard and your equipment as well, so.
You have, you have two very different proposed, two, two different uses that are going on. I don't pretend to know what, what the answer is. I can tell you what the boundary is based on the work that we did. And I can tell you the existing features that we've located. And I can tell you what the, what the areas are that are occupied by the DPW and what areas we located elsewhere. But how you put it all together and assign portions of the land here, there, that's, that's something that I think the board has to figure out.
I mean, I thought, I mean, I'm jumping in here, maybe I shouldn't, but I kind of thought that was the next step in the process. Is once you know the total, then we can assign a description to the 10 acres or the arboretum. A description of the DPW property. So you're actually got a, your, your, the finished product will be, although not subdivided, we will know where the parkland, dedicated parkland is, we'll know where the DPW property is. And I always thought that the board would need some kind of expert recommendation on how to, the Scotsers have the two coexist.
Because they're very different uses.
Not only that, the.
Don't want to intermingle.
The arboretum, the arboretum might have some components that it needs that would change where that 1.2 acres is. And the arboretum might have some existing components which dictate where the 10 acres might be. So it seems to me you need to have somebody who's got knowledge of, a little knowledge of DPW planning and arboretum planning to throw those two together and come out with a workable end result. So I always thought that expert.
Yeah, that's, that was the conversation we had.
Expert recommendation.
You know, why, why we initiated this with you.
Yeah, I, I think if you do zero in on a design consultant to assist, then the results of that consultant's work will then define the boundary between the two.
That's right.
Yes, Justin?
I, thank you, Scott, for your, your survey here. The, the first question, the first thing that struck me on this is, and, and maybe this is just a problem with labeling, I, I hope it is. We have an area called the existing arboretum area, which is encircled in green on, on this survey. And that's one acre. And it seems to, I measured, I've put it into a GIS system, it's just less than one acre. That seems to correspond with areas where invasives were mitigated. To me, that doesn't really, you know, if we're talking, that's one tenth of the, the space that we dedicated, you know, in July 2020, I believe it was. So are we just mislabeling that? Is that really, should we be calling that areas where invasive mitigation happened? I'm worried that we're losing 90% of the dedicated.
That wasn't, that wasn't establishing anything permanent. That, that was, those are, that's really the exact same area that we originally located when the disturbance took place and the question came before us, you know, what areas have been affected? So based on our survey information, that was the area that's been affected. That certainly doesn't mean that the arboretum is restricted to just those areas. Those, those are just areas that we have located so far today. So I mean.
In fact, it can't be restricted to.
Yeah, isn't it?
Cannot, cannot be.
You were identifying it in a different way from the rest.
We were just identifying, if you, if you notice the calculation, if you calculated the area, the area would be exact with the same area we indicated was disturbed, because that's the only evidence that we have, once again, in terms of occupation. That's the key word here. You know, what's being occupied as, as we speak? And to our best information, that was being occupied then by arboretum in some way, shape or form. But not, it's not intended to say the arboretum is only supposed to have one acre.
So it was, it was maybe a little bit of a misunderstanding there in terms of how.
In steps.
Yeah, change of label.
An arboretum, arboretum, how you pronounce it, planner? You know, would say, all right, you got the existing one acre that you are clearly using. You got nine more acres. What, what do you want to do with it?
Yeah, that's where the planning and the design work.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess that's how I understand it. Yes, that, that there, there is, according to the 10-acre declaration, I guess, an additional nine acres and.
Probably dedications or whatever.
Where, where, where does that, where does that fit in this, all this?
That is also just, so it sounds like it's an issue with really the labeling. And it sounds like what you were doing is going based on the physical artifacts, right? And identifying that area.
That's what you do.
Right. Well, it's not all that, because the, the Dropbox files, which I, I didn't read completely, but it's basically a legal title search, you know, the, the legal document is establishing those claims to land around this area. So I'm wondering why likewise, we didn't do, when, when we said, where's the arboretum? You know, rather than going from, okay, it's 10 acres, to going to the sherrets. If you look at the July 14th, 2020 resolution, it specifically mentions this is doing what we said we would do in the comp plan. In the comp plan, there's a map. And if you overlay that map with this area, you've got about the 10 acres. So I'm just wondering, you know, you did some legal legwork here, but when you went to identifying the existing arboretum areas, it's, however you pronounce it, you know, you basically just went based on the physical artifacts. And I'm asking, why didn't we just do the thing that to me is logical, which is go to the map that we said that we're using?
I don't think the resolution is that clear personally, but.
I was, I certainly wasn't aware. That's certainly not a filed map, I'll tell you that much.
It's on the outback, page 7.
But it's not at the county clerk's office, which is where we do our research. And, and so if there is a map and you'd like me to include that and show where those lines are, I'd be happy to add that onto the drawing, but up, up to this point, I didn't know about it.
And does the map fit in the boundaries that are defined by the survey? Yeah. And does the map fit in the boundaries that are defined by the survey?
I've, I've also put this, the, the map, you know, it's, it's not a professional survey map. It's kind of a concept map. It also is the proposed parkland map for the Northwest Quadrant, which includes also the town here at Canal Park and deserve, right? And it's imprecise because it basically includes some of the Canal Corporation land in that area too. Just like our assumptions did when we probably bought the, the apartment lot there years and years ago. But basically my, you know, my recommendation here is that we don't just stick with the physical artifacts, but that before we go into more refined planning, we should use the, the map that we have.
But that wasn't, that wasn't a, like, that's on a survey. So can we, I mean, is this that?
This is a finished product that you gave, give to us.
Can we say, here's the concept from, to Justin's point about just kind of showing the, the intention?
Yeah, I, I think we can take what Justin is speaking about and we can overlay it onto our work and we can fit it in and see how it falls. And if that's what everybody wanted at some particular point in time and it still works, then I think that's a great starting point. And if you were to get a consultant involved, then they would be ahead of the game by, by looking at that.
How many acres are on the map?
My point is.
That's him. How many acres are on the map?
Well, it included the.
So I actually did some of this work. So basically.
You did, if I asked you.
And, and this is based on something that I showed the board. Let me make this brighter as well. But basically the, the survey seems to, the, the shape is very, very similar to what's online in Monroe County GIS. So this process there. And so this is based on overlaying and, and referencing the map in the plan with the, the shape file from Monroe County. And that's what you get. So, you know, I tried overlaying it a couple of different ways. And when you cut that out, you know, you've got about the 10 acres. So we can talk about this offline, I guess.
Yeah.
You know, I'm happy to help and give you.
We can go through it.
Yeah, I, I mean, if I had that drawing available, or it looks like you can do it too. I can also give you the, the digital file that we have that I can convert it to a shape file for you if you want. And you can overlay it that way. I mean, my, my point is however you want to use what we've achieved for you. So that you're, so that we're now, we're now solid on the boundary, how, how it fits. And if that works with everybody, you know, maybe you don't need a design consultant. Maybe you've, maybe you're going to figure it out for yourselves and you don't have to worry about it. I don't know. It's up to you.
So we can label that concept because that wasn't mapped out by an official.
Yeah.
The question I have is, would you overlay that? Is that going to, because it's overlaid on things that aren't ours? Is that going to equal 10 acres?
That was my question. That was my original question. We have a special map that we like.
It probably wouldn't exactly. So you'd have to tweak it to, to fit. But.
So maybe we'll start with all that.
Yeah, but I think it's a good starting point.
Yeah, if, if you round, depending on how you round, you can go to about 10 acres. It will require refinement after the initial overlaying, but we're pretty close.
Excuse me, Zach, Zach had, yeah.
I was just curious, going by what you surveyed, how many acres would you say the DPW currently, if you didn't include?
Well, you have a number of outbuildings and, and yeah, it really depends on whether you put the road in there, the drive.
How many with and how many without? How you design the property, right?
Yeah. And, and so I, I don't know. I'm, I'm just estimating. You may be, you may be around like an acre and a half right now. And you do have an encroachment into the canal lands and that's something to think about.
I'm going to donate the canal part.
Oh, yeah.
No, I don't think so.
I don't think we prevail on that one.
Well, as you were thinking, you said out loud, didn't you?
There are some areas, I mean, it's such a different, as you walk through there, there are areas that lend itself better to being part of the DPW than probably arboretum, which is how I say it.
Right.
Respect to your arboretum.
Tomato, tomato. I don't know.
My, my point is, is that if we're already approaching on a canal core property and we don't have the new rights to take it over, that's going to push us if we do define a self canal core property further into the wooded area to still maintain our functional ability for that facility, which is probably to take more away from that.
Well, I guess, I, you know, I think, you know, what you brought up though, I mean, we need, I think we need a professional to help us sort this out and really help us come up with how we make this next step. Yes.
We have some comments.
Okay, hang on one second before we get to that. Thank you.
Jeff, I also have a question. I'm not sure if you know about this, if the, if there wasn't issue with us being on canal core property in the past.
Are you asking, has anybody said anything about this? No. Scott, is, is, is building on their property? Is any corner of their building there?
No, it, it just, the, the boundary just touches the face of the building. It's extremely close, but there's an area to the west of the building where I think the DPW has gone in with maybe some construction materials or something. And, and I don't know, maybe it's possible to lease that from the canal.
No, they're leasing it from the county.
Yeah, they usually, you know, they'd be willing to maybe make agreements. I mean, that's something that we can, that's another piece of this clearly that I think we need to follow up on.
I don't know that they want something. Where, how does that, where does that, where is that in relation to the path?
There's the, there's the line right here.
Their land is adjacent to the path.
You can see the canal path right here, but.
So it's.
It shows canal.
Typically though, canal court will have a lease agreement, which if it's something for public use to activate the canal.
I see.
You know, so, I mean, I think this has been a sleeping dog kind of thing.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
Just saying, yeah.
But don't count on it as agreeable land with more.
Yeah, we're going to have to sort through that, I think, a bit.
Yeah, I, I sense that the, that arriving at the, the agreeable boundary is going to be a challenge.
Could be, could be. So, okay, you, you guys are sorted through that.
So does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I think we just have to take the temperature if we decide that's what we want to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I can make a few.
Well, I mean, we really have to decide if that's what we want to do.
Yeah, I know, I know. Yeah.
So it has to be some reliable number of years in order for us to make sense to commit DPW permanency there.
Yep, there's that too. Yep.
Is that why it's a restriction type of?
No, we're not going to do that. It's not going to be an adverse issue.
I'm, I'm just saying that we probably should not count that as usable.
Well, if we can work out a deal.
No, I, no, I agree. That, that's, that's, you know, the purpose of what we did was to show the occupation in, in all those areas where we saw disturbance around and, and use therein. So.
I'm sorry, Scott, will finish.
So that, so that we can make decisions and determine what you want to do about that.
So was your estimate of one and a half acres for the DPW including, did that include that strip, the canal corporation strip or not?
No.
So how much area is that?
But, but that, but my, my off the top of my head, acre and a half is, is, is fuzzy to the extent that it really, it really depends on, if you will, who gets the, who gets the drive, who gets the common drive? Because that's a big, that's a big chunk of property.
And also the parking lot as well, right? Parking lot as well.
A piece of it is.
Yeah, I don't have the drawing in front of me.
It sort of angles up, doesn't it?
I have like the tiniest laptop I could find.
Kind of angles over.
Yes, the, the parking lot to the west of the building and south of the building, south of the office. That's, that's on canal lands as well.
That's a pretty.
How do you use that?
Um, I don't, don't hold me. There may be, I, I don't, I don't know if there's anything buried underground there. But it's being used as a parking lot.
For who?
For our staff.
DPW, DPW.
How much area is that roughly, Scott, do you get a guess?
That might be two tenths of an acre, quarter of an acre, maybe.
Okay.
Yep.
This is why there's a lot of weird pieces here.
Yeah, it's kind of like, kind of like all the discussions I have heard tonight. Nothing, nothing simple.
But you know what was so interesting and Scott brought this, you were saying this is one of the most unique, difficult surveys. I thought that was fascinating because it's almost like research and archaeological dig combined.
Yeah, I would say this is probably the second most difficult survey we ever worked on. Largely because it was never surveyed and, and I'm surprised how close we came to the recorded acreage on this. But, oh, you know, we went back and recovered the canal monuments and we couldn't find any of our neighbors who had done that.
Wow.
And, and really the canal monuments define the boundary because everything is really connected into that. On the south side and then on the north side, we have the railroad. And then on the east side, we have a railroad as well. So it's very complex. And that's why I, I shared, you know, our research drawings with you so that you could see this is not anything like a conventional residential survey.
Yeah, yeah. Really interesting work, honestly. We had comments from, from the public, questions?
Yep. Take the Q and A first and then I'll let the other residents speak. Can these materials be made available to the public? Put them on the village website? Is the actual survey included? There's a lot of public interest in this. Really just started coming in and.
That's our intention. Yeah. I mean, we're just all receiving this.
The official ones, Scott, still.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, this is now, he's giving us the update and people should know that this is the update from our engineer. But also some of the documents are really large, so we have to kind of figure out.
Yeah, it's getting it up on the website.
How to handle that.
Yes, I agree. I can get it up on the website. It's not going to be tomorrow and it won't be next week.
But we'll do it. That's our intention.
And I'll put a section up for the read and put it on.
Yep. Plus it's interesting. Yeah. Next question?
Okay, and Mr. Corby, you're allowed to speak?
Thank you. I, I'm kind of surprised to hear this discussion tonight because so many of these issues were discussed in 2020 when we designated the village parkland, the 10 acres. And as I've explained multiple times before to you, the 10 acres was determined by going on GIS and basically drawing a line that delineates the beginning of the trees in accordance with basically what Justin Likid described at the meeting tonight. The reason for putting that boundary was there is because there's a natural berm that currently is planted with a spruce plantation that buffers the DPW yard from the rest of the arboretum and creates a visual barrier. So you can't see the DP yard from the arboretum, which protects both uses and, and works well. And that was clearly discussed in July of 2020 when we designated this. We also discussed the use of the Canal Corporation. There's municipalities up and down the length of the canal that have municipal facilities on canal lands. You can go over to Fairport and see the store, the parent and sewer district, which has facilities that are partially on canal land. The Pittsburgh sewer district facility over on Monroe Avenue, by the Monroe Avenue Bridge is on land that was acquired from the Canal Corporation. The Canal Corporation has a history of leasing and selling land to both private owners as long as there's not a historic preservation issue involved and to municipalities for municipal uses. One of the things that we looked at when we determined that the 10 acres should be parkland in accordance with a comprehensive plan was, you know, what, what flexibility did we need for the DPW? If say in the future, a new garage was built. Anyone who's walked the layout right now knows that it's a very inefficient layout, both in terms of where the current garage is located, the small buildings that are in an island between two driveways. It's just not a very good layout. There's a very easy way as an architect, someone who has experience in space planning to reorganize that and give plenty of room for the DPW yard. In the 28 years that I served as mayor, the yard never proved to be too small, even in its current somewhat confined configuration. An interesting note is that the yard was developed in the 1950s when the, the village operated both an active sewer plant and a water department. Both of those uses are gone now and we take our brush over to the town so that the taxes on the yard that occurred in the past currently don't occur. So I, I hope that you will continue to abide by the resolution that was passed by the village board in 2020 that correctly determines the boundary between the yard and the arboretum based on physical features on the property. That, you know, there's no reason to reinvent the wheel when that work has already been done. And on behalf of the 90 members of the Friends of Arboretum, I thank you for your continued support of this wonderful project and the village's largest part. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So just, just to clarify, so the 10 acres that were designated, the survey in no way changes the fact legally that 10 acres were designated.
So that was clear.
Okay. Yeah, just to clarify for everybody. Yeah. Are there any other comments or questions from people? Okay.
Just to clarify as far as the next steps, then if we're going to have any kind of a discussion about refining the, the boundaries, one of the next steps would be looking at the initial maps and, and, and seeing where that's laid out to, to make further refinements.
That would be a step. And also I think, you know, as you said, to get a design consultant, you know, start, start that process. I think, I think we're really going to need that. And that's something we had discussed in the past. That, that would be part of our next steps. Any other things you would like to add, Scott?
I, I would just, you know, because I've been involved with this project since the beginning and I recall how things started out. I was never provided with the drawing that's been described as the delineated line that evidently Justin has a copy of. That would have been interesting for me to see. But it also begs the question in my mind, if all this was delineated as, as we're being told, then I'm, I'm really puzzled as to why a submission was not made for site plan approval. If it's been defined as we're being told it is and, and, and all the rigmarole that happened, happened because of work that took place without approval. And with the rules and regulations in the village of Pittsburgh being as strict as they are and with that work being done as I've been told now, I'm confused as to why that wasn't submitted and why it wasn't put through the process that we're so well aware of on so many private projects that we see here. That's, I find that quite astounding to be perfectly honest. So I, I'm happy to take a look at whatever was delineated. It was never shared with me. I'd be happy to put it into the drawing and see if I can make it fit well and to try to recover work that was been done. But I never received any communication that way. And I'm puzzled as to why, if this was all done, it wasn't submitted and put through the process that is so well defined in the village of Pittsburgh.
Thank you for the observation.
Regarding some other items that you wanted me to speak with.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Corby is raising his hand again. He has spoken already. It's, we do have a new resident who would like to speak.
We, I'm sorry, we have a.
We have a different resident would like to speak.
Why don't we let that resident speak?
So I'm going to let the new resident go and then you guys can let me know what you feel. Mr. and Mrs. Depp, you have to speak.
Hi, this is Emily, 81 South Street again. I just want to say I really appreciate the conversation around this tonight. It's great to see, it's so clear to me that each of you bring different experiences and expertise. Like Justin, I love that you like went to the, you like have the ability to do your GIS stuff. And it's been, it's very eye opening because I think unfortunately this topic has been mischaracterized a lot on social media and just things I've been hearing around the village. So I would just encourage that going forward, board members speak to the facts because it's very dangerous when we start spreading misinformation and causing hysteria around something. And so I really appreciate that the right steps are being taken to oversee this really large and really important and like really cool thing that our village will get to have hopefully in the future.
Thank you. Yeah.
As you said, I think it would also be important that if board members see this misinformation floating around on social media, that they try to correct it. I think that would be helpful for everyone.
Thank you. Thanks for your input. Yep. Okay. Any other?
We have Mr. Corby waiting to speak again.
Sure.
Mr. Corby, you're able to speak?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify a point. We had a discussion about subsequent steps in July, but we were advised by our village attorney that no subsequent steps were taken, Scott Harder. That's why no site plan was submitted at that time to the planning board because our attorney advised the board that it was unnecessary.
Which attorney was that?
That attorney.
It was you. That's what you say. I don't know. Okay. Thank you. Yes, Justin.
Yeah, if I may briefly, I just, I, again, I appreciate the work that you've done here, Jeff and, and Scott, I'm sorry. And, you know, I can't speak to the original miscommunications. I did have some concerns about this. The, I, I presented the, the overlay maps that I presented tonight, I presented to the board several months ago. And they were based on the cop line map. And I'm, I'm sorry that somewhere the ball was dropped and I was wrong giving to you because, you know, to me, this has been pretty clear all along and I wish we started from a clear understanding rather than, it seems like maybe spinning our wheels a little bit.
Well, I don't know. I'm glad we finally have a survey that hasn't been done since the village was incorporated. I think that's wonderful. I think we needed to have an accurate survey of what's there. So I see no wheels spun. I think we have, this is now part of a next step. And we move forward as we all want to, to get the best possible project for our community.
So I want to clarify something.
Sure. Yes, Jeff.
I obviously cannot divulge any attorney-client discussion. I can't do that. I will not do that. I will tell you that if you look at the 2020 minutes, there was no discussion. There was no discussion of future questions. There was no discussion or questions to the village attorney about, should we take this course or that course? There was no recommendation by me against or for any course. Thank you.
Thanks for clarifying that. And thank you for putting that on the record. Appreciate it. Yes, Renee. Sure, of course.
So I've got the comp plan map or the page from the comp plan up and I served on this committee. So it was my understanding though, that this was a concept, like there wasn't a, so I think we still needed to do the survey. In order to make sure that this arboretum and our DPW designated land are protected. Whatever administration decides to do what next, where like a survey was a necessary piece. And so I think putting this somehow, even though it is a concept, somehow putting it on that map, just so.
We can, we can.
Yeah, and showing that it is a concept.
For reference, it's a good starting point, as I see it.
Yeah, knowing full well, it's not an official survey when we did it. So the boundaries of this concept could be incorrect, of course.
And I, but I think having this discussion and learning what I'm learning from all of you. That was not information that I was privy to. And I think I mentioned it when we first sat down on this issue. For every development project that I've ever worked on, and I've worked on quite a few. And I think it's a planning board requirement as well from the village. You know, you want a verifiable boundary survey. So you don't design something based on an assumption. It doesn't fit. I mean, I'm pleased that we were able to come as close as we did with our computed acreage. I would have, you know, I was, you know, obviously thinking it could have gone in many directions. Which is why we took so much time to be so careful to verify what we found.
And so that motion then, as I understand it, that everybody's referring to on July 14th, 2020. Was predicated on you all understanding that there was 13 acres. And so what we're hearing tonight is that we have 11.2. And again, for anybody listening and also for the record. The fact that there's less acreage doesn't mean that all of a sudden, there's less of an arboretum. Because 10 acres, no matter what that was, even if it was misinformation given to the board who made that motion for that designation. The 10 acres right now still exists.
Right. You have, you have at least that. And yeah, and I guess I was looking at what was recorded in the county, which was 11.3. I wasn't aware of the 13. But yeah, it's.
So there was no like land grab and we're all taking it back or anything like that. Because I know that's been certainly, I think, one of our residents, Emily, I believe, referred to that. You know, this misinformation once again, floating around in our community. Now, if there's 10 acres designated for an arboretum, we now have a highly accurate survey. We thank you so much for your diligence on this. It's 11.2 acres. Your next step is you're going to kind of get together with these maps. And we're going to get a design consultant to really help us with these boundaries. And I think that's, that's an appropriate step for our community and a positive one.
And you know, not for nothing, not only do I do this for a living, but I also serve on various boards for the town of Victor. And I think what you're keying in on, which is the critical thing, which is cooperation. I haven't sensed personally cooperation on this project up until about this point right here. So I think if you can continue with this level leveled approach, I think you'll, I think all the parties will be satisfied.
We all want the same thing. We all want this wonderful public land to be put to use for the public.
Yeah. And I think that's always, always been, always been the case.
Yeah.
But I think there's been, shall I say, subterfuge, you know, that is, that is, for example. Not allowed me to have perhaps some of the information that was referred to tonight.
Yes, may I just ask, in the finalized version of the survey.
Sure.
If we could just to reduce confusion, relabel the existing areas to say.
Oh, sure.
In blue areas or something?
Yeah, absolutely.
And that would, that would be great. And the other thing is, as far as the original. Discussion of how large the parcel is, the 12 and a half acres that was mentioned in the resolution. If there's a meeting where I presented some information about where that came from, I think. And part of that is the encroachment that was incorrectly counted and a couple of other things where I think we plombed onto the existing parcel size. It does kind of make sense. It's the wrong number. It doesn't challenge the dedicated size.
I do want to close this out. And I also say, you know, you bring up the point of, you know, changing labels and things, you know, there's misunderstanding. I think anybody, you know, realizing that something maybe isn't labeled properly and going, whoa, wait a second, this doesn't make sense. It's helpful just to call the office and we can get everybody in touch and maybe resolve it. Rather than resolving it in other venues and in other forums. Yes. Are there any other comments from the public? The Diaz is going to speak again. Ms. Diaz. Oh. She would like to speak again. One last comment and then let's wrap this up and let's move on because it's getting late. Ms. Diaz, you're allowed to speak.
Yeah, thank you. Actually, this is Gabriel. Sorry. I think there's some identity theft here. I'm going to track down this Emily Diaz and talk to her about that. So thanks for letting me speak. I just want to continue. I just want to make it really clear. There's some context that is missing here about the arboretum. And the misinformation that has been online. And I just really want to be pretty explicit about it. Since the start of, since the inception of the arboretum, I believe it was really pushed through kind of on the last day of the previous administration of Bob Corby's tenure. It's been weaponized online. I won't say who's been saying things online, but people have been, you know, saying that people have broken laws. And and have been acting disingenuously. And I really think that's a horrible thing. The truth is, the arboretum was, I think we're seeing evidence today that the arboretum was rushed in its inception. Certain steps were not taken. Stormwater drainage was not really considered. The environmental review was not completed as it should have been done before all these plans were put in place. That is not on the current administration. I want to point that out. That was done before Lisa took office. And and I think that it's really horrible that people online are saying, are using, are weaponizing this. Especially when I really do love that there are many villagers who are putting their, volunteering their time to make this thing a community effort, making this work. I think that's great. And I really hope that they continue to do that. And I hope that people will really think twice before believing what's being posted online surrounding the arboretum. The way it's been handled by the current administration and that we all learn how to act as neighbors. As, you know, as we should. So thanks very much. That's it.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, so we're wrapping this up. So we have some action items here. You're gonna, we're gonna coordinate with these maps. And what we'll do is we'll, I know you probably have some ideas for some good design consultants. And we can certainly start to put together some things for our board to take a look at and really make, make these next steps happen.
Yep, that sounds like a.
And one last thing I just would like to add. I don't govern through social media. I govern here and I govern by looking people in the eye. That's all I want to say. Okay.
Do you want me to touch?
Do you have one more thing?
Well, we, there were a couple of other items. One was the RFP for South Street. I took all the information that we had from our Zoom meeting with Dave Cruz. I put that into a revised RFP. Zach indicated that that should probably be a 2023 project. So if we, if I can get together with Dorothea and figure out meeting dates, you know.
Yeah, let's start getting that.
Then I think maybe we can send it out. Maybe it, maybe it's returned in October. That gives the design consultant several months over the winter, which is a great time to do design work as a consultant. So I wanted to update you that way as to how I think that can go. Basically following the same RFP process that we've already done previously. And then I didn't know if you wanted to talk about the canal path and.
Yeah, if you could just touch on that because, you know, the Canal Corporation came through.
The.
That their.
And you may want to jump in on this one.
You know.
I'll, I'll start it off. So I received a call from Zach about the condition of the repair that the canal was doing. In that construction area on Chain Place. And I couldn't exactly get there. One day it was raining so hard, I couldn't really see anything.
I remember that.
But I, but I did get out there and I saw that they saw cut the canal path. And I saw that they put a lot of, I'll call it chunky stone down there, which doesn't really, I mean. I'm, I'm struggling to think how it functions from an engineering perspective, but it's not very attractive. Let's put it that way.
Have you folks been down there to see it?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of, kind of chunky.
It's a second of your. Throwable size.
Yeah, it's, it's the throwable size and it's, it's enough that you can trip over. And it's enough that the plow can rip it up pretty easily. So in response to that, I, I photographed it and I sent it off to Brennan, who's the.
The engineer.
The engineer for the Canal Corp. To basically say, I think the gist of the email was, can you guys pave this for us? You know, I mean.
Yeah, because they, they cut, they moved back the path. Did you guys see that? They made it even by cutting it off. Yeah, it's very great, you know.
They'd already lost about a good eight inches of asphalt.
Already.
Right.
And they cut out about another eight inches.
Yeah, so we're like just under two feet.
So I haven't, I haven't heard anything back and it's been a few days. And so my, my feeling is maybe perhaps we need to take it to a higher level.
I know. Yeah, we'll do that offline. We can, we can follow up. Maybe a few people. Yeah, because I think we kind of need to have them take another look here.
Yeah, that's what I think. But and then I also, my, another feeling, I guess you could say that I got from looking at it is, is. If there's a way to beautify this rock, and I don't know if there is or there isn't. But if there is, maybe there's somebody who has skills beyond mine that can advise you accordingly as to how you might do that.
Touch base with John Reddington, you know.
On material.
Yeah, just a little something to kind of soften you.
I don't know if you've seen it, but I'm, it's, it's just not keeping with Pittsburgh, I guess is the best way to describe it.
I think they, they gave us short shrift is what they did. They didn't have to get something done and they just did it. Well, they're behind schedule and they have a labor issue.
Yeah, it's just a concrete bucket with posts and with bags of stone.
Right.
And my, my final comment is, I'm reminded of when we had a project at the other end of the canal and we had a failing wall. Or there by Aladdin's and we got into some, I think it was a couple hundred thousand dollar project by the time it was all said and done. And that had to be 15 plus years ago. But one thing I would recommend from that learning experience was. When the canal is drained, we ought to take a closer look at this area.
Oh, that's a good idea.
And see if this repair was adequate. I mean, right now they came in on a barge, right? And they put, and they put a lot of stone on there, right? Okay. But how did it all fit? How did it all come together and what's beneath it?
How do we know what lurks below?
So we do have the advantage with the canal of being able to drain almost completely every year. So as, as with the other projects we did, let's take a peek at it and see.
Okay.
If there's anything there and, and, and bring it to the Canal Corp's attention, should we find something?
Yeah.
So that was my comment on that one.
Thanks for checking that out and you too, Zach. Thank you.
And the final item that I wanted to bring up, which wasn't on my list originally. But I heard someone talking about code revisions. And I don't know if you're going to do a code revision in the near future, but if you are. One of the things that I learned because I helped write the drainage code with the village some years ago now. We found out that there was a, I think there was a definition issue with one particular item. That one attorney representing one of our developments picked up on and showed us that we had a conflict with the definition. And another part of the code, I can, I can identify that.
Okay, if you could.
The fix list is about five years.
I'm sorry?
It's not a fix list or a five?
Yeah, so I'd like to, yeah, thank you.
That's on our low hanging fruit list, I think.
Well, I just, I just like to get that on the bus if I could, you know.
Just circle back with us on that.
Yeah, so I just thought I mentioned that. I don't want to hold you up any longer. Sorry.
So this has been helpful.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you and thanks for all your good work. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Scott. Scott, send that, send that definition change to me, please.
Yeah, I'm sort of keeping the, the major list of all the changes.
So you're the list keeper?
Yes. You're the list. Thanks again.
Thanks, Scott.
Good night, Scott.
Okay, let's see what's next up here. 25 mile per hour village speed limit. Do we have to take it to public hearing? You already passed it. We can just pass it. It's already. I know it did at the state. Here, why don't we have Jeff speak to this and Renee can chime in too.
Actually, Renee is probably going to do it.
Yeah, Renee. We'll have Renee speak to it. Either way.
We were permitted under the old rules and regulations to do linear feet designation 25 miles per hour. We have done that.
Oh, we did. Okay.
Didn't look code. Yeah, last year.
Don't feel bad because Renee and I talked to each other and said, you do this already? So now the legislature has allowed us to just do it by street. No advantage to us because it's already been done. The biggie is.
We still don't have control over state home roads, which is what we were trying to change.
And we're still working on that. We're not giving up.
Even that legislation, it's a good thing. They basically gave you a shorter way to accomplish the same thing you already could. Because you used to have to go into your code list the streets.
And that's what you're seeing in the package. So we're all there.
Yeah, we did that on our.
So, so the next step for us really is let's make sure that we, we update our signage on our village streets.
I was just going to bring it on.
Yep.
So I'll start getting.
Yeah, we, we'll talk about that. We'll get going.
You can switch the one out on, because when we did that code, we corrected it to 20, because we're not allowed to do 20 on South. So you'll put a 25. I don't know what I, what.
No one's really complained about it.
We could, we could try to leave it, but.
We just can't enforce?
We can enforce it.
We can enforce 25.
Who's writing tickets in our?
I give up who.
The sheriff posts there once in a while, but usually.
They won't tell you a five or seven over and by then the pedestrian is dead, so.
I mean, we could try that in college.
I think we should. Well, okay. Well, you can talk me into leaving it there as we.
No harm, no foul.
The 25, the 30s to 25s is the.
On our village streets.
All right, I'll just, I'll swap, I'll swap out the 230.
We can use them on our state owned roads, but the next time a driver takes one out.
The DOT, DOT is.
Oh, that's true.
Which is great because anytime a sign, it's not known by a car that's, you know, speeding on the road.
Yeah. Okay.
It did make me wonder though, talking to NICO when this law came out. And you know, we've been trying to, a different route to get in with the state legislator, legislators. Our DOT regional, the head of DOT for our region sets the speed limit. And we know they haven't, they don't think lowering it would help and that it's set correctly. So I wonder if we just need to keep having some conversations there. Since they set that, maybe they could set it for our.
I'm thinking that.
I mean, stand out on the street for a while.
Yeah, they have. They've been standing out luckily a lot, doing all the surveys as they, you know, the traffic surveys and counts right now. So I had hoped someone would like, be like, Jesus, someone should slow things down around here, but nobody's said that yet.
Yeah, they were, they used to work at a 65.
Yeah, probably. Yeah.
This is, you know.
That might be a good route though. Don't we have a new regional chief?
We do.
Or what, whatever the title.
Whatever the title is, but a new.
Head director. Thank you. It's late. I'm starting to lose my mind.
Yeah, I know, I know.
It's ours.
And just, just to close out this 25 mile an hour speed limit thing, because Lily, you would ask for it to be on the agenda as well. Was there anything you specifically wanted? I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, I had seen it on August 18th, I think, the announcement. And so I just wanted to make certain that we were ready to change our signs. We are.
I just want to clarify that we are only going to be replacing the signs that are existing and relying on them to be any new. So 25 mile an hour posted streaming on Jackson, Austin.
On our, on our village streets.
Is not necessary.
Right. Whatever's, whatever we need to replace.
I'm, I'm, what I'm asking is, I'm not adding two signs that are non-existent at this point.
No, as long as we, we can replace the ones that we need to replace. That's all.
Yeah, that's fine.
What does the sign say entering the village? Does it say all village streets 30 miles?
No, but that was one of the.
That was another.
And I guess.
Those are state roads though.
Are you right? We have to get approval from.
Yeah, I mean, and which we should. We should still try to get the approval to do that.
About 30 mile an hour village speed limit on state roads and then we have.
No, just say village wide speed limit and see if they'd allow us to put that sign up because technically it is a village wide speed limit.
Right, because they're village roads. I'm liking that.
Yeah.
I think they're only going to post.
I'm running with that.
For their, the speed limit there.
Well, we'll, we'll get, we'll, we'll talk with them, you know, I just say, however many times they say no, it's still an opportunity for more discussion. I just say, however many times they say no, it's still an opportunity for more discussion. What was that, Jeff?
You guys sound like lawyers now.
I mean, like a pretty ye olde, you know, welcome, but you know.
Quiddity quack.
Okay.
You guys sound like we're in a.
Okay, so we're good with that. Next item up, LWRP code update. Justin.
Sure. So most of us in this room are aware of the importance of the LWRP process for ensuring that new projects and modifications to existing projects around the waterfront area is done in line with our standards. I think that at least three of us have served on a board applying the LWRP standards and we understand those well. This, my point in discussing this is not to affect any existing application. Of course, this is just for new applications that may come in. But it seems that consistent with a theme in other discussions tonight, the chapter one twenty-one code, the LWRP code, might not be a model of clarity in all ways. And so what I tried to draft out for the board were some possible changes to the chapter one twenty-one code, which addresses a particular area where the review of the decision of the planning board may be delegated to a different agency. And actually, that may be very broad based on the definition of the agency in that chapter. It might be perhaps a municipal employee. It could be a very broad net. And I don't think that's necessarily what we intended or what we would expect. So I just wanted to run this by the board and see if we could get in the queue a code fix for this. I also wanted to thank Chairman Delistr from the planning board for discussing this with me. He gave me a couple of modifications to a Word document to tidy up this code a bit in the same direction. And I sent his changes along to the board recently. So I'd like to, you know, move it forward if the board is amenable to that and get it in front of the public to discuss.
Why don't we bring this back for some discussion with the board? Because I also would like to add, and I did make the board aware of this as well. And thanks for doing this. This is great. First of all, we're already doing, you know, our code workshop. We already now have a workshop coming up on our short term rentals. I had a meeting with Bill Smith and as you know, the LWRP was jointly written with the town and we virtually have the same code. So when I was speaking with Bill, he said, we need, I'm all in on an update here, you know. Like we're due for this because when was it written? It was written, I can't even remember how many years ago now, maybe fourteen, fourteen, fifteen years. And yeah, roughly that. And so, you know, Bill said, why don't we do a joint, just a joint update? Because whatever you folks want to do, we need to look at as well as your neighbors along the canal and the town. And I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us to just kind of bang this out together, make sure we're still moving forward with this on the same page. And we can certainly wrap this into that. Bill wants to do that this fall. The town wants to set this up probably starting in October, get this going. And I think that's really a great idea. There's another piece to this, if I can just finish here for a second here. There's another piece to this. When we go for funding for, through the LWRP for grant money, they take a look at sort of how dynamic our LWRP is. How often do we kind of look at it, review it, maybe tweak it? And that actually counts for what, you know, getting grant funding. So I'm thinking this is a wonderful opportunity. This is a great start. And we can move this forward with getting the workshop together, you know, just next month with the town and make it happen.
These are two separate things, right? You're talking about updating the LWRP, which absolutely needs an update. But this is talking about the piece of the code.
I understand that, but I think a lot of it's kind of derivative, you know. That's all I'm saying is that I'm looking at it maybe a little more, I don't know, better word, holistically, yeah. You know, that, you know, this is a piece, this is a piece. And maybe we put it in our code update workshop, you know, maybe you want to start with it there. But I do want to address just overall the LWRP and the need for us and the opportunity that we have to sort of update this and take another look at it with the town, so.
I'm guessing that the code, chapter one twenty-one, which is almost identical to what the town did, must have been some kind of model for.
I'm thinking that too.
Them to be as close as they are. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe somebody wrote one and then each entity kind of did their own thing with it. I would like to know whether or not the State Department has any updates to their model.
Oh, I would love that too.
That's a good one.
That's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I'm all, you know, I get this. I think, you know, let's take a look at this for sure.
It is poorly written, almost, I wouldn't say poorly conceived, but poorly strategized or tactically put together, well. Doesn't mean that whatever the State Department has today is any better.
But it's probably worth a look at, you know.
Would think.
Because it's vetted and, you know, all of that. So why don't we actually even put that down as an actual, yeah. I want to, only because I'm coming fresh off of meetings, like the way it's under HPV and watched that whole process and how that played out. And I'm just wondering, I understand what you're saying about being a joint project and looking at it in the much broader picture going forward, and I agree with that. But I'm wondering if there's one little piece, which was the little glitch, if you will, that permitted an applicant to utilize a part of the code in a way in which it was not intended, I believe, in when it was. And they took advantage of it, which is their right, but I think we need to fix it and sooner rather than later. And it's just, it's a small thing. It's not, it's just a few words. And then also to approach the LWRP in a broader sense. But to fix this little, because we have a planning board chair, who's been a chair for many years, very astute, as we very well know, guarding the code, has identified this as an issue. And I think, and we're being requested to deal with it. And I think as trustees, I would like to be responsive to our boards when they make this sort of a request. And I, you know, I'd like to. I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying. And I think we are responsive with, you know, we've got our list, we have our code workshop. I think we should just wrap it all in. I mean, this is what we're doing. Put it right in the code workshop. It might take longer, period out, you know. I don't know. I just gave my opinion. Well, because I'm also, you know, and maybe there's a, you could speak to this, just the cost of just parsing. Fifteen dollars. A single piece, you know, which is why we sort of said, oh, no, let's kind of wrap this into our code workshop so we kind of get a few more things happen. I would also suggest to update code once, not twice. So if you're looking at the whole section. Not that far out. I would do it once, not twice. That's all I can say. Yeah, about fifteen hundred dollars a change. I know that.
Well, if you change it and go through the hearing, it doesn't, until we submit it to the state, it doesn't count, right?
So it all counts. It all counts.
No, but I mean, we can't, I'm saying, here, go ahead.
If you don't submit it to the State Department, it's not legal.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So we can't just fix this and wait until we have more to submit. You have to do each one in order.
I think that would be confusing.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, I could be wrong.
We talked about this before. I just wanted to clarify.
This is just coming from how I submit the local laws. Okay, you do a local law, you submit, you change one line, you submit that to the State Department of State. You get that back, we put up that local law. Then you go ahead and you say, oh, well, we're going to change and you're going to change, you end up changing that line again. I just think it's very confusing for them to go and do all the code updates because then you're paying, because you got to codify the first, you're paying each time and you got to codify the second law. Codify it once. I mean, I'm. I don't know how that would work. I just think.
Legally, it's not a problem.
No, it's just confusing.
Legally, it's not a problem to me.
Which just costs us.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't speak to legal. I don't speak to policy.
You have to speak to policy. But that's why we came up with the code workshop, to be able to just kind of get this done and let's just do it. I'm sure, I'm sure at the meeting you're going to have a bunch of stuff. You might have to pass two local laws to do whatever you need to do to update some stuff. But I'm sure you can put out. That's all. I mean, I'm all for looking. Whatever you need to do, it's my choice. All I'm telling you is, whatever you do, don't be doing twenty local laws.
I mean, legally, if you have a, you can just make one change and it becomes the law when you file it with Secretary of State.
Right, and it goes up.
Whether or not, whether or not you, it would be better to put it on the books. People have noticed of it, but it's not, it doesn't change the legality.
Right, that's the question.
Yeah, okay.
You know, would somebody say, well, you have read your code. It doesn't have that in it? Your board might say, yeah, well, that makes sense to me. But, you know, legally.
Well, we have a workshop coming up.
No, but that, I'm just trying to, legally, it's totally the board's call and how they want to deal with this issue. I personally think there should be a holistic look at chapter one twenty-one.
A whole, tell me.
Holistic.
Holistic, yes, yeah, okay.
You shouldn't just look at, I mean, clearly this was, I mean, the three attorneys agreed, yeah, poorly written. Ultimately, this is probably the most defensible interpretation we've been reading. So that's how we're going that route. But certainly the change that Justin suggested would eliminate that issue. I think there were other issues. It's a question of how quickly the board wants to.
It was a matter of a few weeks before our workshop and what I'm thinking, what we could do coming out of the workshop. Maybe we don't get through all the low hanging fruit, but we get through enough so we have a package.
Right.
You know, and we just, we just put this in.
Because the fear is we don't do any of it because we're like, well, we should do several things all together and then we don't do anything. So we get a batch of it, crack them out.
Yeah, honestly, I don't codify it until I have almost six months a year's worth, depending on how many will be lost, the village is passing, because that's when it really gets expensive. So the more writing they do, the more changes they got to do, the more the ballots go up. Yep.
Yeah, Tom, where's the press?
Oh, yeah, Justin, excuse me. Name and address, please.
Yeah, Justin Delistr, I'm thinking about, I'm fine with the draft that was on the village website today. And I'm extremely concerned about the upcoming things at the particular, you know, clear cutting project that we're going to need every bit of LWRP support to support. Before that was shot down under the environmental review. And that came back a year ago at this time and they've been knowing what to do about that for the last year. They're coming to, there's only a contingent of the environmental review, in which case they keep ready to move forward. And just in case you don't know what that is, the canal maintenance plan, they could cut down every tree and change place. So that's their.
I'd like to speak to that because I've been directly in touch with all the parties involved, as has Bill Smith. And there is no clear cutting that will come through any part of Pittsford Village. None, zero, because it is only associated with any true breach of the embankment. In fact, that's why when you even see the little stones that we had for the repair, that was the level of our breach. The breaches of embankments are categorized one through five, one being the worst. That happened in Brockport where there was, and they don't like to use the word breach. I can't even remember what the word, they use something a little nicer. Water was going into the street. We're at a five. They would have no reason at all to clear cut. And most of the clear cutting, if they were to do it, are with this very steep embankments. We don't have that. So I understand where you're going with this, but it will not happen in our village.
As far as I know, there's no plan right now. There's just.
There is nothing. There is nothing that will come in.
I did read the report and section one through five corresponds to which side of the slope they're on. Could be on the canal side of the slopes to the top of the peak or on the other side of the peak.
I can appreciate it. I think we're getting a little far afield.
What I'm just saying is there could be some new things coming ahead. And the LWRP is one of our strongest things, where I put particularly steep agencies on it. And we don't know what's coming up. I would just give you that as an example. You know, you know some things, but anyway, I would really like to see this fixed so we don't have some of those actions. A lot of these code issues are not really going to have a large impact on the village. This section could, you know, we can debate things like garage types and things that are nuisance for applicants. But this is something that can really, if not.
I think we're all on the same page and I thank you for your comments very much. I really do. I think we're all on the same page with that. But and again, you know, we're going to be hopefully doing this joint workshop with the town to really take a look at our LWRP. And this will engage the entire community with the village and the town. So in addition to just this, even this piece of code, and I think that's important too. Yeah.
I just wanted to emphasize that the, I feel like we're still confusing the LWRP policy document that we adopted with the town with the short section of chapter one twenty-one code.
Understood.
And I think that there's no reason to wait until the whole LWRP is adopted.
We're not.
These code changes.
We're not waiting. We're going to wrap it right into our, it's just going to be.
I would like to, I'd like to, speaking to Justin's comments and also to Trustee Lanpeers and from my own perspective, I would like to get this moving forward. And I think that our attorney also brought up some interesting points about how there could be other issues with this code. But basically, this is a short plan for making sure that we follow the policies in LWRP. We know there's at least one loophole. Maybe there's a couple others. I would like to figure out whether we can just move to public hearing with a couple of wording changes that were sent to the board to close this loophole and possibly leave us open to other changes if they are identified by our attorney.
Really, I'm sorry, Justin.
Sure, good.
Really, the loophole is H. The whole thing, right? Because you've made, the board makes a determination that says, you know, you don't need factor one, five, ten, whatever. Then the applicant has a right to prove the sub paragraphs A through D in page one. And if they prove it, no matter what, and the record demonstrates it, no matter what the planning board or any other board does, they're going to win, right? So the loophole is not the language about which board does it. The loophole is the whole subsection. So, I mean, I don't know why that is there. I know why it's there. But I don't know why Pittsburgh's required to be there, to be, to have an LWRP that's recognized by the state. I don't think so. But that's really the loophole. The loophole is the ability of the applicant to put proof in the record such that a no A, B, C, and D would be arbitrary and capricious. That's the problem.
And so, I mean, I do like your idea of perhaps there was an update from the state in terms of, you know, just to check that out.
I mean, that just struck me right now since we were talking about it. It's not a question of which board does it.
Maybe they've addressed it.
There may be questions about that. The real question is that we've got a built in variance slash hardship slash whatever you want to call it that gives the developer, the state, whomever, a way around justified LWRP determination.
Agreed. And I think that's well expressed. So it sounds like what we have is, and I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, but it sounds like there's a problem that we agree we have with the current section of code. It sounds like there are probably a few different ways legally to address that, either by changing a couple of words, deleting one twenty-one five H, or changing the definition of the agency. You know, it sounds like there are multiple ways that we can solve that. I'm not against making other changes to that chapter, but I would like to move forward with addressing that one problem.
I would say just.
We don't have the full board here.
I'd be argumentative, but eliminating a couple of words doesn't change the real problem. It will not eliminate the real problem.
Well, okay, so.
I mean, that's just my point.
No, no.
So I'd be clear that you can change, you can eliminate the possibility of any other agency being involved LWRP. But if that applicant makes a good case so that the planning board, it becomes arbitrary and capricious to still say no, it's going to be a yes. That's the real, in my terms.
How about if we, can you take another look, see at this? And maybe we can get a model from the state to see if there are any updates. And let's put it right on the next agenda for the. And let's put it right on the next, Jen, for the next meeting. Dan will be here as well, we'll have a full board and we can.
Because we can't set a hearing unless we have precise language.
You have to, you have to have your changes, it has to be at every board member's desk, at least seven days.
It has to end, so you're, you're not there. Five days, seven. It's this, I thought we changed it.
It was, yeah, seven.
I, I know there's.
Anyway, okay.
There, there is a provision also for, um, making a, a change and making it less restrictive as we get towards the public hearing, correct? So can we say that our change?
Yes, yeah.
So what I was gonna say is, you know, can, uh, can we just say that our change is possibly deleting 121 5H and, uh, removing the, um, the clause that says, or agency in the event that the planning board does not respond in X amount of time? So we've got multiple, uh, strategies with minor text changes to address this problem, send it to public hearing and.
I don't, you know, Dan isn't, we don't have a full board, I don't know, this is.
We have a quorum.
I know we have a quorum, but I'm just saying, I don't know if he's weighed in.
No, no, you can't do it tonight.
You cannot do it.
Yeah, it hasn't aged or anyway.
Because you gotta.
And we, we haven't had.
It hasn't aged. It's gotta age in order to send it, to even consider sending it to public hearing.
That's right. That's what you're suggesting, can tonight be the day one of aging or?
Well, it's not gonna move it any faster because you can't set that public hearing until.
On the other side of it, right, okay. So then we pick it up.
You can't anticipate.
So can we get it before?
Right, you can't anticipate it.
Maybe in a more refined way so that it will have started the aging.
Correct.
Okay.
You've had, you have it, let's say this is the documents you wanna use, that's great, but you still can't do it until your next meeting because of the time point.
But I think that's what Justin's saying, can we make sure that we are.
So we're not moving into hearing.
Right, we can't do that.
We are not. We have to age it, whether it's five to seven days, and I know we wanted to change that, but I.
I thought it was five, but I think I saw it was seven. We'll talk.
Okay, we'll, we'll straighten that out.
And we also have an opportunity now to refine it with some of what Jeff is saying.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we should, um, look at, look at some of the other rates.
That's a big change, I would really wanna do some good legwork on that change.
Yeah, yeah.
You mean the eliminating H.
Eliminating H.
Yeah, that's huge.
Versus the suggestions that, um, Justin and.
Yes, I'm fine with the both.
Yeah, okay, I know.
Um, I have a comment, the board is ready. Um, I have a Q and A.
Okay.
Okay, um, M E C, which I know is petty characters. It's an important piece to address as soon as possible. The current code makes the village very vulnerable to potential abuse by developers. Please address this as soon as possible. Where in the code does it say that an applicant denied a consistency review has the right to appeal?
121 5, period, one, period, H.
And then Steve has his hand raised.
Oh, yeah, Steve.
Yeah, I guess, I, you know, I hate interjecting here, but I guess I'm not quite understanding urgency of this change compared to pie, putting it with the other changes we're proposing. Doesn't it cost money to do this, to change the code to the state? We're already gonna do code changes. What is so urgent about doing this right now? There's nothing else in the pipe. The things that are already on the table can't be changed by changing this code. So I'm not understanding the urgency of pushing this through right now compared to the other codes we're gonna be changing. Why wouldn't we do it all as one package and make life simpler?
Well, I mean, I was thinking that was, you know, part of our, part of our discussion. I guess, how many, how many times, and maybe you have, I mean, I wouldn't know this, um, how many times has this particular section been used this way?
This is the first.
The first time, so it's not like we have people lined up doing this, so, I mean, I think we have, I mean, I, I think we need to address it, but it's not like, you know, all of a sudden are we gonna have something happen overnight or?
I would say the urgency is up to the board trustees.
Of course, I understand that, you know, but, but understanding that up to this point evidently, in your knowledge, has never been used with the exception of this one particular.
It's never used.
Developer.
Ever been used.
Okay, so, you know, I'm just saying, can we just take a breath, do, as you say, maybe do a little bit of a deeper dive here? Um, and maybe do a little more work on this, that's all. I mean, I, I, that's what I'm thinking. We've had, in how many years this has been in place? We've literally had one case, and now we've found this, so I don't know that people are lined up to use this, you know, yes, Justin?
This, this is based on a pretty creative reading of the code. And I, I think that with the nature of loopholes, it is not apparent to anybody and nobody uses it until someone does. And I think that this is a critical section of our code. This helps to ensure that we apply a lot of the standards that we really care a lot about, and we do that well. Um, and right now, we're running a risk of losing that entirely. Um, so I do think this is incredibly important, um, and I would like to start the aging process.
I don't know that we're starting a, a risk of losing everything entirely. I mean, I, I, I really do hear what you're saying, I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm just saying, I'm thinking maybe we need to, maybe do a little more with the language. Jeff, you had brought that up and take a look at.
The whole sub paragraph is the risk, not the particular.
Yeah, and so.
That's my thing.
No, and I, I mean, you're, you're the attorney, you've worked with this code, you, you, you just helped to apply, you know. So that's all I'm saying, I think it's, it's a good idea to look at this, we need to do it, but let's, if we're gonna do it, let's make sure we're doing this, you know, covering all the bases, that's all.
Two issues for me, if you want to accomplish, if only the planning board looks at the first one and then looks at the review, the variance slash hardship, whatever you wanna call it, then you make the change that Justin and Justin have been talking about. Uh, if you are concerned that there is a possibility of overriding what you consider to be a justified LWRP inconsistency determination, then you have to get rid of the whole subsection. Because no matter, now I've said this twice already, no matter what you intend or want, if that applicant proves his case, we're gonna win.
So then, so, so let's say we get rid of the whole thing, okay? So then, would there ever be any mechanism for an applicant?
Article seventy eight.
That it goes right to a lawsuit, goes right to litigation? And what this hopefully would have done was to, I, I don't know, that's what I'm trying to, you know, there's always mechanisms in the code for relief for an applicant.
Here's the piece I'm not comfortable with.
Yeah.
Not comfortable saying we don't have to have, I don't think we have to, but I haven't done any research to be able to say. I don't know if we have to have to have some kind of variance mechanism in there. I'm guessing we do not.
Okay.
So in that case, the article seventy eight is from the initial inconsistency determination, which I think is easier to defend than hardship, if you will.
Right, so there's no mechanism right to, whatever that outcome is.
I think, I think it's harder to defend.
Let's just see, and reach the litigation.
The 121 5H factors than it is to defend the one through fifteen factors provided to the findings correctly. But, I mean, that's, that's the second issue, it's not the one that.
Right, right, right.
Justin phrased.
Yeah.
Actually.
Oh, Justin.
Actually, um, this has come up once. Um, there's, there's multiple small tweaks in here about the same approximately three items that we've had issue with. So I'd say we've had problems on at least three applications out of maybe five significant ones. Um, so there's, we just want solid code, but, um, so many other things are the timelines involved. Um, maybe, we can work with what's there, but, um, Zach's come up as an issue before. Um, I suggest that change the end to the timeline statute in state law for quick things, which is you have sixty days after the close of public hearing. This is sixty days from a receipt of application, and we don't always even have a meeting.
And that's not in there.
It's lined up in there. Um, anyway, there are a few other things that would be helpful, but what I'm saying is, because there's that clause H, but there's several issues that have been proposed to be fixed based on.
Well, it sounds like there's a little more work to be done, that's all, I mean, that.
Justin, H hasn't been used to your knowledge before, has it?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, H was used before, there are issues more related to H.
Right, H was not, not used before.
H was used with the same board.
What?
H was used, but with the same board, correct?
Right.
When?
When?
Twice.
No, but for what, what was the applicant?
Same project, different versions of the same project.
Oh, oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it wasn't.
It wasn't used for this particular.
No, I mean, some of the other things is, there's another project.
It's the same.
Yeah, yes.
And H was suggested to try and correct what we've encountered that I think are somewhat of a loss to consider. But if we're moving along next time, it's great, so thank, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, but why don't we, why, Renee, what you?
I was, I was gonna say, can we put whatever, I mean, it sounds like Jeff is gonna look up some things for us and, um, have a draft between now and the next meeting so that it's on the agenda? And if it looks like a good, because it sounds like there's multiple things in this section that we need to address.
Whatever we need had in, let's just do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's just.
Yeah, I mean, while we're in there, let's get the gold letter too, we're doing surgery.
Just, just a procedural question, so the, the aging, is that something the board has to decide on, or does that just?
No, no.
It just means the delivery.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just the delivery to your inbox.
Yep.
Gotcha, okay.
The words are on your desk.
Okay, so we'll work on this and then we'll make sure that it gets distributed.
You're not gaining anything by starting it tonight.
Yeah.
So I'm getting sort of mixed messages.
Oh, no.
I mean, Justin's talking about more changes, which.
I'm fine with what's on the table, but now there's.
Okay, hang on one second, let's, let's let Jeff finish.
Well, no, no, I mean, that's what I'm asking, I mean, are we gonna try to?
I think we should look at, look at this.
Try to get those boards' considerations.
Why wouldn't we?
Into this? And then do I have direction to draft these things alternately, alternatively?
I think that would be good.
So that we'll look at whatever other changes they're talking about? And then with a slight change to H? And then we'll look at the changes they're talking about together with maybe the elimination of H.
Right, I mean, I think that's, that's a realistic way to proceed, and, and if, you brought up that there's a few other things. You know, while we're doing this, let's, let's address it, you know?
Can I, so Jeff, I, I think that it's gonna be good to get that input as long as it doesn't push us past being able to age this for the next meeting. It's a third to a public hearing.
Next meeting at twenty nine.
So, well, I'm not, I can't control that.
Right, right, but I, I think that if.
Well, we'll get on the deadline and make it or not.
Right, I would like to just do whatever we can, and, and I would like to ask you for your input on this, that we can, uh, age this before the next village board public meeting. Um, so that, that will be my motion, then if we need a motion, uh, then we do direct, uh, our attorney to help us out.
We don't need a motion.
Which, tell me what you're gonna do.
But I have a comment.
All right, hold on. When's the next meeting?
Twenty nine.
Twenty nine. Today's the eighth. Are you kidding, the meeting's the twenty ninth, the twenty eighth was a special meeting? Right? No, I think, I think it's written down here.
Put it on the sale, the twenty eighth, we, no, we're not doing, you eliminated twenty eighth.
Twenty nine to five.
Twenty nine, five thirty is.
Yeah, I'm very early.
Picking off our workshop.
Maybe I'll send you a name.
Sometimes send me the whole list.
Sure, we need a workshop.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so the twenty ninth, so if we have it by the twentieth or twenty first, it's enough time to age for the meeting.
Correct, well, I'll confirm that date with you, but I know I saw it on Sunday, because I used to think it was five.
Okay, we'll work that out. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, right.
And I can actually further to submit, by the way, I already sent some.
Okay, so we'll, hey, we'll just, we'll circle back on that.
Justin, you don't wanna work on the, on the, on the timeframe?
I already did send that, yeah.
I thought that was in, I thought that was in here.
It's in the document, it distributed.
Yeah, and the timeframe was in there.
Yeah, so let's.
I think it's like, you're doing your piece on H and combining it with the input that's already on a packet, correct? Is there anything else?
Yeah, pretty much.
Was it, okay, Justin's version didn't make the packet because it came out after I sent out the packet.
Don't look at the packet.
Whatever, whatever we need.
I'll make sure.
Sort it.
I'll email it to you.
We need to close this out, it's getting late and we have other items, okay? And I think we have, have direction, one last comment and we need to move forward, it is, we, we've been doing this for a long time.
I understand. Um, Marco Foss, the one case is the one that has been controversial for years regarding seventy five in a row and which, which I understand has already cost the village times because this developer will not be turned down and has been enabled by finding this code. Because of this loophole in, in, I'm gonna say in tunnelment, the LWRP and the planning board can be discounted. Would a change in the code be shutting the door after the cows have gotten out?
Okay, thank you very much, all right, we're gonna move on to our next item, um, that's the customer survey.
Do you want me to?
Oh, where's that, thank you so much, Jeff, appreciate it. And customer survey.
Oh, I didn't prepare for this, um, I thought you were, I didn't put that on there, did you put it on there?
We just thought we would, so we were circling back on it.
Yeah, no one gave me, no one gave me any feedback.
For liking it.
I sent, I can resend the document that we had.
Thanks, Justin.
Thanks, Justin, the end of June, um, I would have brought copies for everyone again, but I didn't get a single comment from anyone.
Everybody seemed good.
We just wanna use that, and, and what, are we gonna put it online, or are we gonna?
Um, I'm thinking a couple, what, what I'd like to do, you know, as, as people go through the pipeline, this, let me run this by everybody. You know, they go through the process and then, um, the follow up is, you know, how did we do? And they get, they get it electronically delivered, you know, into their email.
Okay, perfect.
Just take a couple minutes, that's all.
Awesome, I don't, I, do we have a way to build a little survey, or do I do?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean.
Outside of board day.
What if we're gonna use mail, just, thanks again, Jeff.
Oh, I was coming back through to say good night.
Oh, okay.
Um, maybe through constant contact, we might have.
Yeah, that's true, they, they, I think there might be.
Most programs have a way to.
Yeah, constant contact might, we'll, we'll research it.
And it was only, it was like we were trying to keep it to a page, why don't I circulate it one more time? Just to remind everyone it was the end of, it was the end of June, the last time I sent it around.
Yeah, just refresh everybody's memory.
Okay.
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
And I think Justin Leeser gave us some input as a board member too, which, um, is already in.
He did incorporate some of it, yeah, which was great, so.
Okay, that'll, okay, shoot, I thought it was yours, I didn't.
No, 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 it was just, no, it was just how we left it.
No, he's on first.
It's okay, all good. No, and, you know, and thanks again for, for your, your help on that, that, that's just great. Okay, four corners signal cabinet artwork.
That's not mine, is it?
It's ours, it's, it's you and me.
Okay.
So, um, let's see, where's the, the cabinet is going on which corner, is it gonna be one of the four? There's a signal cabinet that I believe is going in one of the four corners.
Like a big metal.
This, this was a conversation we actually had with Nice Dot.
Metal.
Thanks so much again, Jeff, take care. Um, and, you know, you see them, um, sort of decorated with artwork on like Park Avenue, you know? There're those boxes by the traffic signals.
Is there one behind the library currently? Behind our library right now?
It might be.
It's a green square box, and that's, when you pull in as if you're going to, to the Kennedy with Ben there.
Yeah.
And it's in front of you, and it's, somebody has written on it, Say La B, S A Y, L A B I E. Yeah, get it, say.
I, we're, we're, okay, anyway, we're rocking there.
And it's late, but we're trying.
Years.
It's that type of box?
Yeah, but, um, when you go down like Park Avenue or something, that, it's artwork in it, and, um, Nice Dot actually has a program. And Kevin Canaan sent us, uh, this document, we fill out a little application saying, we'd like to decorate this ugly box sitting on the corner.
What's the function of the box?
Um, it, it is all the electronics and everything for the traffic signals.
Oh.
And so they, it has to be there.
They're usually like a big, grand, ugly box.
They just, you've always had an ugly box.
Coming to the pole.
And sometimes it's on a pole.
The pole is gonna be covered, coated black.
That's right.
So it's gonna be a galvanized box on the side.
It'll be like slam.
Yeah, it's gonna.
Yeah, and so, for example, um, when you go down Park Avenue, one is Susan B Anthony, another one is all butterflies flying around the box, you know? And so when we were talking with them, and I, maybe you don't remember this, she said, oh, maybe we could have a little art contest with the kids in the school or do something kind of fun in the community, you know? And, you know, we just, kind of a nice thing, so, um, we just wanted to, you know, bring it back to the board because I'd rather have something kind of great and artistic, you know, for our community than a galvanized box.
More than have to pick the winner, right?
More than have to pick the winner, right?
Something that's less likely.
We'll have like how the art teachers do it.
Yeah, stick your stuff.
Right, but the signals are behind and they're not gonna be in based on what you said before. This, we've got.
We have some lead time.
Because they won't be in.
I have to say that they won't start putting the structures.
Okay, so the ugly box may be there.
And maybe they're just awaiting to be wired up.
But you probably can't paint until it gets a little.
Yeah, we have, you know, yeah.
There's time.
There's time.
I'd like a Trump love painted like a bush. It looks like a bush or a plant.
I know. We can do like an azalea.
The ones on North Whitney, they're painted with flowers.
Yeah, there's all kinds of, and some of them I've seen are like up art. Some of them, one of them is like an Escher.
I think for them to.
Yeah.
Remember, they have to see the artwork.
They have to see the artwork. I, he's mentioned something that it can't be so wild that it conflicts with traffic, you know, like so distracting or something. So we'll revisit that, but I just wanna let the board know because I think it's kind of a cool thing and it's okay with the DOT. Well, we, it goes through them. In other words, they approached us with this. And then they said, you guys kind of pull it together.
But we pay for it?
Um, I think we have to. Oh, no, there's money, there's money.
Heard about you would pay for it, but we could probably reach out and I'm gonna ask again.
Yes.
And I know this a few years ago, reached out to the Arts Department for the high school. See if you'd be willing to, or some kids would be willing to propose something.
And there's also art funding for this, for stuff like this, too. There's grant, grants.
Okay.
And also maybe at the same time, mirrors under the bridges.
Yeah, that one's a bigger.
That's kind of huge. And that'd be a big.
You know where I can.
Can I form a thing?
I, I.
I want lighting under the bridges.
Discussion on that one.
I want lighting under the bridges. I definitely want lighting.
So, yeah, in the city, the neighborhoods, the neighborhood organizations, at least like Park Ave when they did theirs, gave a small stipend to the artist, which was kind of nice. That's not necessary, but, you know, if it's a.
We get, I mean, I think this will all be sorted out. I think it'll be just a nice, nice project. So. And, and what was nice is Nice Dot approached us with this. It was just great. So, you know, one for the team here. Okay, so we'll, you know, we'll keep you guys posted on this and kind of where we are and what Nice Dot needs and all that. Next up, backless benches for State Street. Lily?
Yep, that was me. And the reason I, I am talking about backless benches is because we budgeted $1,600 and the back benches with the backs currently are $1,800. So we, we can afford the backless benches according to our two.
Can we afford four legs? Can we, can we afford four legs?
Yeah, just checking. Legs, the whole thing.
Okay.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't forward to the board the link to Belson Benches is the, is the company. Isn't that the one that we still use? And Ippi Wood, Ippi?
Mary Ellen's is your order.
Oh, Ippi Wood, yeah, yeah, Ippi Wood. Can you forward the link to Dorothea and she can distribute?
Sure, that'd be great.
I just wanted to begin the conversation, at least with the board, regarding them. And they are, I think they're $480, $580 a piece. It might have gone up since then. Yeah, but they're four and a half feet long. And we have to get permits from DOT in order to install them. Whether we find a little extra money and get one bench with a back, if the board would prefer, or get two benches with no backs, so that's something to consider, we would have to get the permits from the DOT.
A permit for each?
For each bench.
The ones on State, yeah. Well, you were, you were the go-to person for the concrete slab.
Right.
You were.
Our expert.
So providing that the bench is fast and same way as the rest for the women's club, you can probably just, you know, use that same template.
Yeah, what was the name of that? It listed on there. Why don't we sort this out? It sounds great. Send the link so we can all take a look and, you know, let's, you know, let's get going.
The tough call will be whether we should wait longer to get, like what you've said, pay for one bench with the back and the arms because those are more practical for people to sit on.
Consistent for the village.
And it's consistent and it means we have less of them out unless we, as part of our, our book funding or something like that or whatever else.
I'm bringing it to the board.
Yeah.
So we have one ostensibly, gradually, and one, and one end where the crosswalk is. Because the women's club donated that one. And then one maybe closer up to Northfield Common Entry Way.
Yeah, something like that for balance.
Yeah.
Anyway, okay, so think about that and we'll, we'll get the board rolling with our permits. Since you're.
Yeah, how long did it take last time?
Buddy buddies now with the DOT.
I think, I think you've.
No, I mean, boy, I was sending Christmas cards and birthday cards. That's how we have our mitzvahs. I know, it was a thing.
Is that something that we, it would be for the spring or do you think you try to get?
That's why I'm bringing it out now because it takes a certain amount of time to get the benches and the gap. Get into the hopper.
Probably ask for us to do the install after the DOT is done working there.
Yeah.
And then what, once the DOT has done working there, we still have to go through and tear up that section of sidewalk and replace it.
That's right.
From shady place to the those lines. So we still have a lot of work that we're gonna be, you know, destroying the areas.
But this is good. We're getting, you're upfront, you know, we're getting it in the hopper. Okay.
Because it was budgeted and I want to make sure I didn't get lost.
Nope, not getting lost. We're loving the benches. Okay, let's move quickly if we can. Rear entrance bid.
Sure, I can, there's the rear entrance. It needs to be replaced.
But through the window.
Through the window. We had a meeting, we had a meeting with Jennifer Annes to bring this up to date. We're just about ready to go out to bid to get the work done. The, we anticipate bringing the bid for the board to approve and set the bid, where the bid specs, first meeting in October, I think, is the plan, October 13.
Yeah, there's a timeline.
They're applying to Chicago for the final approval there. So the anticipation is to go out to bid, send it out in October, get the bids in. We'll give them plenty of time. And we don't anticipate to do the work until the spring. So.
Yeah, we gave them an extended time. But they, the discussion that we have is a little longer for the bid just because of, you know, the climate, just to kind of get responsive.
We don't know what we're gonna get for quotes because of the labor shortage, the lumber and everything else, and it's during the cost battle. We don't know what it's gonna look like.
Did she recommend wait till the spring or?
She recommended waiting till spring.
Because that kind of work can be done, a lot of it can be done during the winter.
She's hoping if we tell them to wait till the spring, they'll be able to give us a better price.
Spring is the busy season and it's gonna be more of a.
Well, let's revisit that with them. We can always revisit that. This isn't cast in concrete.
But in the meantime, we are doing an asbestos test, which is required for all projects on a municipal building. So we'll be giving results to that. And everybody cross their fingers that there's not.
I know.
Otherwise the project will go.
Not a drop of asbestos.
And, and once you find it, it has to be avated. Yes.
This is covered by the grant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I was looking.
That's why we're trying to give it, we've been, I don't wanna say stalling it, but we wanna make sure we're trying to get the best timing, the best pricing for it because it's a hundred grand. When we received it, is that enough now to do it?
Yeah.
So we're hoping that.
Would it cover, or would it cover the cost of remediation if something were to be found in there? Do you know?
It will cover the whole cost. We just, we don't wanna lose any money.
No, I got you. I meant if they were.
Asbestos remediation.
Um, it will, if it's part of the project, it covered it downstairs when we did.
That's right.
I mean, the bathrooms went over the grant project because it was too grand.
It was a new bathroom.
So that's where that's sitting, just so you know. So you will be seeing that go out to bid shortly.
Perfect.
And I'm looking forward to it.
Okay. Next up. Where are we? Oh, Village, Village Hall Window Restoration. So you, you all have that information? Wait a minute, one, I'm dying here somewhere. Yeah. That's a lot. You know, it isn't, it isn't. It's, it's.
I know, it's good you get what, we want them to be restored, finding the windows.
Yeah, the windows haven't been touched, you know? And also, when you look at actual replacement value for windows like this, not too far off. You know, so, you know, we just wanted to bring this back. And Dorothea, you've identified a few windows that just.
Yeah, we have some few windows. If you go through the Village Hall, if you look, some of the windows, the glazing, the things, we're gonna lose glass paints. We're definitely have some windows we gotta repair right away. Obviously, that's a wow number. We had that estimate done, so we, A, have a good basis knowing what we need to do because looking at the Village Hall, we obviously have some projects that need to be done. As we seek for grants, it's easier if we have the numbers in our back pocket to do it.
Sure, so this is just setting us up. As we are already seeking grant funding, hopefully, even if it's matching, at least it's better.
But the anticipation is, I do wanna identify some of the really bad windows that we have before we have damaged it.
Yeah, then it's worse.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you wanna take a look when you're walking on, take a look, but you can clearly see that it is pulling away.
Yeah, and the window, the, I can't, sorry, I can't remember his name, but he, you know.
Yeah.
He was saying, he got a few here that are, yeah.
I mean, and obviously we're getting, and this goes right to our energy costs.
Right, exactly.
Energy cost is huge. If you sit at my desk, you're cold all the time. That's all I'm gonna tell you.
And one thing that we are looking at when we were all talking about, you know, getting our, that, that direct grants for sustainable projects, some of this may possibly.
Cover that for me.
Give us some points or cover it or, you know, so we're gonna circle back with our, our contact.
Okay.
Our liaison and see if that's something that's feasible.
We gotta do it.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely making a difference. Okay, thanks for that. Village COVID policy. Yeah, we just wanted to kind of revisit this, you know, because CDC's changing guidelines, you know, things are sort of changing. Dorothea, I know you've been keeping up with this and.
Yep, we, as Zach has said, he's got two people out. I have someone out now. I haven't been one of them. With DC, the, damn it.
CDC.
CDC, thank you.
It's getting late.
They changed the requirements that people can come back after five days even though they test positive.
If they're asymptomatic.
Asymptomatic and they wear a mask. Zach and I have discussed this and I'm speaking for you and if I got it wrong, just correct me.
Chime in if needed.
We're still not comfortable with that.
Yeah.
The policy has been to the village, you have to test negative, come back. It's just, we're so small, we cannot afford to use another person.
Just having one person here out for two weeks is what you go through as well.
It's just a lot easier on our part if they're just testing negative. It's usually two more days, three more days before that line disappears. And it, it just gives us a little more measure of comfort. And even talking to our staff, I think they all feel the same way.
So, we have a kind of issue. I did talk to the fellow crew that I have currently and everybody seems to be okay with working alongside someone that is asymptomatic as long as they have masks. The only issue that I'm going to see coming about is the enforcement of the mask and, you know, making sure that everybody is staying masked while they're asbestos positive, which is what happens.
So, so would it be sort of more straightforward to just stick with where we are right now?
It would be easier, yeah. And I know it's, it's inconvenient and some people don't want us at all.
Oh, yeah, I know.
At the time until they test negative.
Yeah.
But I.
Can I ask a question about this, on the, like, sick policy? Because I don't have it in front of me. I know we review it every year, but is this a big burden? So a lot of your particular team doesn't have a lot of sick time. How does it work? Is it PTO?
It's not PTO time. It's not punitive. The municipality has to cover. You have to.
So we have, so it's a cost to us?
Yes, through 2023.
Okay.
We pick up the cost.
But it's not, other than them being bored and wanting to be useful?
Yeah, they're undercover.
Yeah, okay, so it's not a financial burden or it's not eating into their sick time for when?
No, it doesn't. It won't be punitive.
Okay.
It wouldn't be punitive. We have to cover it.
Yeah, okay.
That's through the end of 2023?
Yeah, yep, they extended it.
Yeah, and, you know, I think the reason why we just maybe revisit this just periodically is that, you know, the CDC has said, you know, that we're probably transitioning from pandemic to endemic.
Yeah.
And this is sort of this murky area right now. And that's why we just wanted to bring it back to everybody. I'm, I'm, you know, I think it's important that our, our employees feel comfortable with what's in place and it sounds like you do.
Yeah, it's totally different, you know.
That means you're understaffed longer.
Yeah.
I know.
So, you know, I, myself, I'm, I'm tending toward airing inside the caution.
Yeah.
If you're still positive, even though you're asymptomatic, the CDC says that the likelihood of you passing along is pretty slim. But if that does happen, people jam together in trucks together, especially coming up with a season. Yeah, in a level where confined spaces, post proximity and without a lot of ventilation, could pose a problem?
Well, you know, at this point, we can certainly keep it in place for now. We can even revisit it next month or, you know. In other words, this doesn't have to be cast in concrete forever. And you can give us the feedback with the crew.
Sure.
As well, and you can, you know, staff here.
Right now, given the current one, it's so transmitted.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, the next one might not be so bad. We might get to a point where it's not more comfortable with it, but since it is.
Yeah, and just updated boosters are available. I'm getting mine tomorrow. Yeah, just so everybody knows. Walgreens has them right now. And then they're rolling it out. I think Wegmans is gonna be in another week.
So if someone's still, after five days testing positive, are we gonna be doing temperature checks as they're collecting work?
You're gonna wait till they test negative.
Yeah, that's the policy now. We're staying with it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
We have free COVID tests in there.
Yeah.
Or non-tests.
We are getting them short.
Oh, all right.
And the state, my understanding, not the state, but federal government didn't renew the free testing. So what I have is what I have and I don't know if the county has anymore.
Now, you can order, I know, you can go online and as an individual, you can have free test kits sent to your house. And I think you can have three.
They're anthems.
That's the part they're ending? I thought it was only through, oh, that's the part they're ending.
But there was something with the insurance, they were paying for four test kits.
Yes, that's, I'm sorry, that's what I saw. That was at Walgreens.
I, I want to follow that up and let the employees know that.
Yeah, that's what it was. You're right.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we're all good on that? Okay. Last up, the position of archivist and administrative assistant. And this is something that, you know, obviously with the recent events that have happened, we need to, you know, address this. And Dorothea and I have been speaking about it and I know you've been talking about the needs and how we would, 20 hours a week, again, just a part-time position, same kind of thing, maybe a little bit more of a bump up, maybe 18 to 20 an hour depending on level of expertise.
Right.
We're so understaffed here in the office. I mean, it, sometimes the phone rings off the hook constantly and no one can get anything done. So, you know.
Given recent events with, did something happen?
Well, yes, when Lacy Sawyer died.
Oh, I thought you were talking.
And also Terry was never replaced, you know, really.
There was hope that we could bring Lacy in if she worked out.
But there wasn't.
Yes, that's my break.
And then not having with Sophie's, she was acting as the archivist and getting all that caught up there. Right now, I don't have anybody.
But, but really what we've identified, this isn't about anybody being a gardener. This is something that we really need. Because Terry was really never fully replaced all year round. You know, we really need those archives, you know, managed and. Excuse me one sec, excuse me one sec. And, and also just from an administrator standpoint, just another, another body to answer the phones, help with just.
What's going on?
You know, yeah, all of this. So I think this kind of covers a few bases here for, for the office. Yes, Zach?
I just can see it. Sophie was 20 to 25 hours a week and didn't have much time to dispense with this.
Right, yeah. So this, I think, really, you know, kind of brings us up to speed here. You know, do you wanna add anything about?
I just wanna add, I don't want there to be a fear that we're so backlog. We're really not. Because Sophie was in, had caught us up. She, when we lost Terry, we typically had that lag in between and then she came in and scanned everything. So we're not so far behind that it's gonna be, you know, oh my gosh. So I don't want there to be that. But we need to resolve the situation because.
It's just one more thing for you. And Kristen's learning, you know, Kristen's learning archives as well. We, you know, really what we need is to cross pollinate skill sets with people. So we do have backup, you know, that kind of thing. So this is another.
Post the job.
Well, we've had success with Indeed in the past. The DNC is just unaffordable. We can use the Sentinel.
And also our website, you know, we should, we should post it here, maybe.
And the website, our Facebook page.
Yeah.
We'll put it up in the spots as long as the board's free able for me to go up and put it up for the outpatient, the red, the ad. I can't speak.
Could we just see a, a job description or the, it would be great to have a job description.
Yeah, we need that quite detailed.
We need that for the posting anyway, so, Dorothea has that and we'll, you know, we just wanted to make sure that.
Can I get the ad out and get you the job description you need?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the ad is separate from the job description, that's fine.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, great, all right, let's go right into member items. Anybody? I don't have any tonight.
The DOT update, but you gave it earlier, so I mean, that was. Okay, is there anything else we need to know about?
No, not really, I think that those pretty much are everything.
It's so late, it's almost like four AM.
I have to say, we've lost our audience.
The last one person.
Come to ask that question.
Yeah.
We have one person.
Okay, any, any member items?
I think I'll wait on one.
Okay, it's, I know it's late for everybody, I don't have anything pressing, you know.
I need to have an executive session.
That's right, we do need to have, yeah, you need.
Just a simple inquiry, now, what's one I would candle in it, because I have not heard.
It's happening. It's happening, that's all I know, I spoke with Bill Smith. He said, yeah, there really haven't been any meetings, but we kind of all know what we need to do.
So it's going to be using capacity?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We'll close your.
Yep, the whole enchilada, that's the latest I've heard, speaking of the town. He has reached out to the president of the chamber, hasn't heard back, you know, just to say, where are we with this, are we going to have, you know, just at least everybody in one room? But that's, it's, it's happening.
Okay, should I count on arranging the order bodies?
I would think that it, it's all going to happen, I mean, I, I think, you know, I think we, it's kind of, this is what we do every year at this point, I mean, I don't think there's any surprises really.